We're going to get started in one minute. In accordance with the meeting law, the Board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your excuse, Walter.
Welcome, everyone. There's plenty of seats, so why don't you come on right up front at this point here Before we get started, I wanted to just take a moment to recognize our town administrator and congratulate him and his wife and his family on the birth of their third child, Luke. What was the date he was born, Michael?
Wednesday, April 11.
Well, congratulations. On behalf of the board, Michael, I'd like to make a small presentation.
It's a bottle for Luke.
For us to welcome Luke to North Reading. And we're going to get into some business, but before we do, I'd like to just take a moment of silence tonight for the victims in Toronto and that horrific act that happened today, so if we could just maybe take a moment of silence and think of their families and keep them in our prayers for a moment. Thank you. Okay. We're going to start with the minutes.
Can I just ask for the regular session minutes that we pass over? Those, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, but I think there's a couple of things that were in there that might, I think, just need a little bit more detail on them.
So that's the April 2nd?
April 2nd, regular minutes?
The executives are fine?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
So we'll just do the executive, we'll come back to the April 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 2, 2018 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Folks, come on in, there's plenty of seats right up front, and I'd like to take the moment now to open up for public comment. If anyone's here for public comment, just raise your hand, I'm going to ask for your name and your street and I'll recognize you. Yes, sir. You can use the microphone right in front of you if you don't mind.
Mr. Fitzmaurice, I'm deaf and wany and I can hardly hear and I can speak.
I'm going to try to talk as loud as I can for you, I apologize.
You'll be my interpreter. If you want to read. Walter is here tonight to clear up an unfortunate use of words that were written in the transcript, and he would like to apologize to the selectmen for the words that he used were inappropriate and it was not meant in malice. I think in his thinking, he used words that were not appropriate, and for that, he is sorry, and he would like to apologize to the board and to any members that were offended, and hopefully they will accept his apology and lay the matter to rest.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice, for coming in this evening and making that public apologies. I accept your apology, the others can speak for themselves, but I personally don't really think you did anything wrong. I think you have a right to state whatever position or opinion you may have. I think, yes, you may be a little overboard when you claim that we did something illegal, but you know, you have a right to speak freely and submit whatever you like to the transcript. But my issues with the transcript, and I think they have an obligation to the community and to this board that, you know, if somebody's going to make an accusation that we're doing something illegal, we should at least have some facts before. It's published, and you know, I took some offense to that, and it hurt. It hurt me, it hurt my family, you know, I've put a lot of time here in town, and we deserve a little more credit than someone making a claim that we're doing something illegal if we are. I certainly would hope that the information would be presented so people can make an opinion, but to just say it and without the transcript, at least making an acknowledgement that they didn't have any proof that this was true, to me is more hurtful than anything you had said, but I appreciate the opportunity of coming here this evening in front of us and personally apologizing, and I accept your apology, thank you. Any vote, yes?
And I also think your facts are inaccurate, so I disagree with what was written. Again, accept your apology, but disagree that, you know, we're in an age where we can just spout false facts or false accusations, and they're out there so people believe them whether they're disavowed or not. I didn't hear any disavowing of the facts that were printed there. I think that we're in a place where false facts become news, unfortunately, and obviously the transcript may have benefited by people reading it or looking at it because of what was published, and I too hold the transcript accountable for that. And I take a bit of umbrage at people challenging volunteers. We're a community of volunteers, just because we're elected officials doesn't mean anyone can take shots at us because we're elected volunteers, just like we don't challenge a cheerleading volunteer for his or her commitment, or a track coach volunteer for his or her commitment, or the cable television committee volunteers, we don't challenge them for their commitment. What do we gain by this service? The same thing that every other volunteer in this town gains, which is a sense of community that we're trying to form here by volunteering. So if anyone's challenging the multitude of volunteers that participate in our community, stand up and volunteer or step aside and let the rest of us do that civic service. Everyone should volunteer, but I don't think that that opens us up to being challenged for our volunteerism, or opens us up to be, you know, called criminals or allegations of criminal conduct. It also shows, I don't think you're watching the meetings because the facts that were printed in there are completely inaccurate. I understand in this case that there's a minimal likelihood that what was printed will be given credence, nonetheless, I do hold the transcript accountable for it. So again, I think that this is a community that has volunteers all over the place, everyone volunteers. There's people that volunteer in many different ways, and they teach religious education, they coach, they go to, they open their office up to put 300 Easter baskets together, hundreds of volunteers in this community, and people shouldn't be challenged for the service that they bring to make this a community. That's what we get out of this, and I think that you should know and get to know the people that are volunteering here, because they're everywhere. And that's just my piece on it.
Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Fitzmaurice, if you're here apologizing, I guess that's good. You don't get an award from me for being here, because you should be here apologizing. Did you realize that this affects families when you make allegations like that? My wife was stopped by parents after church yesterday saying, "I hope your kids aren't teased at school at this because of this." I hope that means something to you. I hope everyone in this room is touched by that statement. I was. You know, life is too short to be bitter, I'm going to turn the other cheek on this. When we sign up for public service, we sign up to be criticized on the issues. That's fair game. We don't sign up to be accused of a crime. And Mr. Fitzmaurice, I ask you, when you go to vote in our town elections in May, and you see not one contested race on the ballot, look at your letter, and I think you're going to know why there's nobody running for these offices. No one wants to run so they can be libeled. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
I've been on the board almost 14 years, and board members don't always agree with one another, but I know one thing for sure, they all, their opinions and where they go are always in the best interest of the community, and sometimes those discussions get ravelled in the news and other media, and as a result, they aren't necessarily the facts. I'll make one comment related to the water, which this is focused on, although Steve and I were charged with the responsibility of moving the project, the entire board has been involved, and our chairman specifically has been an advocate for getting this done and getting it done right in the best interest of the community, and I think that's what's important. I also accept your apology. Thank you.
I think, let me think, I first ran for office about 45 or 46 years ago, and I've been in-
10 years old.
About 10 years old, yeah.
Twelve.
And I've seen my name, you know, of course, in the newspaper and the letters to the editor over the years, and haven't necessarily considered it fair, but you know, I consider it fair game, too. You know, and it is unfortunate, and again, I participated in, you know, elected public office, volunteering on different boards, committees, and commissions, coaching Little League soccer, and being criticized for, you know, playing one kid more than another, or whatever it is, but I knew that getting into the game, too, and maybe I've developed a thick skin. And I too have been accused of substantial wrongdoing, bordering on criminal activity, and my kids were subject to it, too. And yeah, it does happen, it does occur, and that's why, again, when we volunteer here, it does impact our families and our community as a whole, and the impression that people have of us. You know, I would just, first of all, suggest to my colleagues here, that's sort of what you buy into, and it's not fair, it's not necessarily right, but it's part of the game, and the family does suffer as a result of our choices that we've made, and fortunately, you know, we've been very, our families have been very supportive, and my kids, for the most part, I guess, have been able to weather the storm over the years, and I've certainly given people plenty of opportunity to be critical of me. Nonetheless, in relation to the specific issue, as Mr. Mosseri pointed out, which is the water issue, and MWRA versus Andover, this board collectively has been working very hard to make a decision which is going to impact this community for decades to come, and nobody has taken it lightly, and everybody's been an active participant, and we've had a good, honest discussion in relation to which direction to take, and we're on the cusp of making that decision now. And again, it's going to impact our community for years to come, and I can tell you right now, unequivocally, I have never questioned anybody's motives or intentions on this board in relation to the position they've taken, their thought process, the issues that they've raised, one way or the other. It's been a good, thoughtful, thorough discussion that's taken place, and it's serious, and everybody has taken it seriously here. So I've been in your crosshairs before, along with most anybody in the last 60 years, you know. Walter, you've never minced your words, and again, I may not have agreed with your words over the years. Again, when I see you in the coffee shop, many times I have thanked you for not including me in your letters to the editor. But that being said, you know, words do matter, impressions that are left do matter, it's unfortunate that people, you know, take it to heart as such, and again, just, you know, going forward, I hope to still hear from you, you know, I still hope to still, you know, see your letters to the editor, you know, just choose your words a little more carefully and less accusatory. Again, question is not our positions, but not necessarily our positions and the rationale behind it, because I've served with these people for a number of years now, I've served with a lot of people over the years, and I can't think of anybody whose motives and intentions I truly do question ever. So, you know, just, you know, for that, for the transcript standpoint, you know, do they have a responsibility to edit somebody's letter to the editor? I'm not overly concerned about it personally, myself, as I said, I've been in the crosshairs before, they have a right to allow people to voice their opinions, question their public officials. You know, would that come some consternation? I personally am okay with it, but that being said, please don't question anybody's motives or intentions here in this particular issue, and I can't think of any other issue that's before us today. It's unnecessary and unwarranted. Everybody's here for the right reason, thinking it through, working through the issues, and I appreciate you coming and publicly stating, you know, what you did, and recognizing the sensitivity of the issue, and to me, I applaud you, and again, I applaud you for your prior service to the community and to the country, too. Thank you very much.
I want to end it with this one thing, and then we'll get to the next person. You are both honored, should have a lot of gratitude from all of us, because you did put a lot of work in. They did, and they deserve that from you, but it was a team effort, it was a complete board effort on that. And in regards to the transcript, Steve, I think it's, they owe us the apology, because, you know, under the old leadership, if there was something stated that, if there was somebody making an accusation, at least there should be some kind of a comment that says that was it not, there was no evidence provided to prove that it's actually true. I think they have that responsibility, because at that point, we weaponized the transcript. They can go out and say whatever they want about anybody with any kind of accusation and it's not right, and I think that needs to be fixed, and I think the transcript should be in here making the apology, that's what I believe. So anybody else have an open, Mr. Delaney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, Sean Delaney, 7 Dix Road. I'm here to speak about this topic, I think I speak from a unique position, having had the pleasure, the opportunity of having sat where you sit for a couple of terms, and Mr. O'Leary's right, you know, when you step forward and you're fortunate enough to be elected by this community, there are some things you have to accept, and that's fine when folks disagree with your opinion on issues and how you vote when you come down, but however, it crosses the line when someone makes an allegation that is criminal in nature. Kickbacks and blackmail, that's criminal, and that's where Mr. Fitzmaurice crossed the line. I'm very happy to see that you came tonight and apologized for that, but the transcript's out there to thousands of people, it's out there. And those of us that know Mr. Fitzmaurice, I've known him for about 10 years, and when I first read it, I said, "That's Walter," sort of like Manny Ramirez when he was with the Red Sox, that's Manny being Manny. Unfortunately, in this community, it's not widespread as to who Walter Fitzmaurice is. So, you know, the transcript is widespread, it's what those people out there are reading it, thinking about the three board members that he accused, that's what it was, it was an accusation, and I know, and no one asked me to be here tonight, truth be told, to be upfront and honest, Mr. Prisco is a very good friend of mine. Mr. Prisco is probably the most successful businessman that I personally know, and I know that he and his family has contributed more than just his seven, eight years on this board, he has contributed a financial sum that I can't even put a dollar figure on anymore to this community. Him and his wife have done so, he's a gentleman who will give you the shirt off his back. When someone makes an accusation, it could, such as this, it could affect your business relationship going forward. Mr. Schultz is a friend of mine, I share office space with him, and he too is a man of utmost integrity. I've known him for about five or six years. Ms. Manapelli, I've known her since she sat on this board now for her third year, right? Everyone has families, and there's certain things as board members you have to accept. In addition to that, Mr. Schultz and Ms. Manapelli are attorneys, as am I. I know what it takes to get to that point in your life. Mr. Schultz has a very successful law practice, Ms. Manapelli does, and she's also employed, my understanding is, by the city of Marlin. We as lawyers, we have a board of bar overseers that we have to report to. That's not, that's just, that's just not, they don't look at what we do just in our practice of law, they look to do, they look at what we do in our private life, they look to do, they look at what we do in our public service life. These could have, this one sentence could have wide-ranging effects, particularly on these two attorneys who are here, and again, volunteering their time, like any member in this community who is an elected official or a volunteer on any board or committee, volunteers, and I would say that that's an exception, that's not the rule. Most elected officials in other communities, whether a town or a city, get paid something to step up and do what they do. These folks, all five of these members have stepped up, Mr. O'Leary, for decades upon decades, Mr. Mosseri for a couple of decades, but everyone has stepped up to give back to their community in their own certain way. Let me just read what it is to be liable. "A method of defamation expressed by print, writing, pictures, or signs, in its most general sense, any publication that is injurious to the reputation of another, a false and unprivileged publication in writing of defamatory material, a maliciously written or printed publication which tends to blacken a person's reputation or to expose him to public hatred, contempt, or ridicule, or to injure him in his business or profession." That's the definition of liable by Black's Law Dictionary. That is what this letter to the editor could have as an effect on the three people it was meant to address, and three members of this board that were accused. And I would submit, although it only addressed three members, I think this is an accusation against the body as a whole, and I was glad to see that both Mr. Mosseri and Mr. O'Leary addressed Mr. Fitzmaurice and coming to support are the three members who were accused of this activity. In terms of the transcript, I think this is where it gets a little dicey. It's my understanding, and I know Ms. Doherty's here, and I know she's a fairly new editor of the transcript, and I know she's dedicated, I think, her entire professional career with the transcript, our local newspaper, I know she had to go over to Linfield for a period of time where they moved her over there, she's done tremendous work, but it's my understanding that the original letter to Mr. Fitz, from Mr. Fitzmaurice to the transcript actually misidentified one member of this board, and it's my understanding the transcript had edited. So in terms of editing, I believe, it's my understanding, and Ms. Doherty can correct me if I'm wrong, they actually took steps to edit it. I don't think they went far enough. I do agree with what Mr. Prisco said, that the prior ownership and the prior editor, one prior to the one before Ms. Doherty, at least would have put an editorial's comment under that letter to the editor, that would have corrected, or attempted corrected it to the public who was reading that letter last Thursday when they received their transcript, and we probably wouldn't be here tonight if that was done. Gentleman, lady, thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment? Please, come to the podium, state your name and your street.
Eric Evans, 3 Sander Lane, just a brief restatement of our position on the sidewalk bylaw.
Go right ahead.
Brief, I said, so.
Hi, everyone, my name is Lisi Egan, I'm the Executive Director of the Reading North Reading Chamber of Commerce. We're here to talk about an issue that everyone is very excited to discuss, and that's snow removal. Cue humor, sorry, I'm trying to lighten the mood, I know it's a lot of important issues, but we have been working as a committee, along with business owners and chamber members, about the snow bylaw. I realize there's other important things, very important things that you have to talk about tonight, but I've been working with Eric, Pat Lee, and a lot of other members in the community, both within the chamber and without, on this important issue. It's something that Mike Gilberto and I have talked about regularly over the years, and I know it's a challenging topic. We were tasked with trying to come up with a solution that worked for both the businesses and the town, and we've been meeting diligently about four or five times and spent a lot of hours on this. We put forth and engaged a local attorney to repeal the bylaw, and I know things have changed a little bit in recent discussions in terms of what is happening, but I know that the snow removal is a challenge. I know Mike Gilberto had reached out to me, I think, on four different occasions this very winter alone, to remind people about the bylaw, which I think tells me that what we have right now isn't effective and it isn't working. I know no one wants to think about the snow because it's finally melted, but I wanted to let the board know that we are, we did work very hard on it, and we'd like to continue that progress within the chamber and for all the businesses. I know that when I see people darting out onto 28 within the snow, you know, it's a white-knuckle situation, it's dangerous, we don't have contiguous sidewalks, which makes it an additional challenge, so I respectfully want to, you know, request that we continue to talk about it, because unfortunately, winter will be here again.
Thank you. So let me just tell you real quick, because we had a meeting this afternoon with a few department internally, and so what we're going to do is, this is coming up for a public hearing for our town warrant articles, I believe, in a few weeks, and Mr. Schultz has been our identified liaison to work with the business community, to continue to have this discussion on this, and my recommendation's going to be to the board is that we pass over this warrant article, because we're hopeful we're not going to have any more snow between now and October, and give you this opportunity to work with Andrew in our town departments on a solution, and we met with the chief today, too, and I think he has some really good ideas, and so we'd like to have one member of the chamber, one member from the business community, Mr. Schultz, along with our department members, and between now and October, before October town meeting, really come up with an option, you know, or at least a consideration to change to our existing bylaw. But I don't want to go to town meeting and repeal it now, because there's no value in doing that, we have now until October, and I think we can get a lot done between now and then, so I could ask you to just be patient, as soon as this meeting's over, Mr. Schultz is going to follow up with you, to start scheduling these regular subcommittee meetings to really come up with a resolution, okay? So what we're going to do is, we're going to identify the problem, and then we're going to come up with a solution that we can all live with, that we're all equally unhappy with, I think is probably the best way to put it, okay?
Okay, thank you. So let me get my two cents in. So I've been, you know, having the joy of coordinating the meetings and putting a lot of time and effort into this issue, and we've come to a decision to come up with a citizen's petition to address the issue and get the bylaw repealed, and we were, as we consulted members of the board, we were told that, oh no, we're going to, the board's going to put it on the warrant. You know, so we missed that March 19th, if we're going to do a citizen's petition, we missed that March 19th cutoff that we're really, you know, pushing for, because we were told otherwise, that the slug and we're going to take care of it. So we would like, you know, October, things happen, we'd like to see an opportunity for this to be on the warrant in June, not in October, and that's really our position, we want to push forward this, and the last person I just want to come up is have Pat Lee come up for a minute. That's all, thank you.
Hi, Pat Lee, 226 Main Street, whoop, I spend more time there than I do, 22 Aspen Road, sorry. You know, it's a debate that's been going on for a while, it will continue going until we come to a resolution. I guess my main point is I want to thank the board for having an open mind and working with the business community, and the business community working with the community and the residents to create a safe sidewalk during the winter months. It takes a lot of effort, it's truly not working as it is right now, there's certainly room for improvement, and I think if the town, the business community, and the residents work together, I think we can come up with a solution, and I appreciate the selectmen giving us the time, Mr. Schultz spending so much of his personal time working with us and the business community to try to help come up with a solution to this. It's not going to happen with just the business community, it's not going to happen just with the town coming up with a position, we're going to have to work together on this, and I do want to thank you again for your open-mindedness and your efforts up to this point in time to come up with the solution, and hopefully it's something we can do in the near future, be it June or October, to come to a resolution on this so we have safe sidewalks for the town.
We agree. I think I speak for everybody on the board, we fully agree with you, but I just don't see it being done between now and June, I really don't. And I would just ask you to be patient, and I met with the chief today, the acting DPW director, and our DPW foreman, and our- DPW director, and our DPW foreman, and our supervisor, and I think they have a lot of really good ideas, and Mr. Schultz is prepared. He's got all the information to put together the meetings and, please.
Real briefly, we, we met today, I was talking to Prisco and myself, with those aforementioned people, and we haven't got to the point where isolating parcels are going to be a problem. We've really gotten a lot of ways down the road of trying to come up with a solution. So I don't want you guys to think we're just giving you lip service here tonight. There's a lot of work that's going on behind the scenes in town hall on this issue.
Thank you.
Well, the July and August meeting is going to be exciting, so make sure you come on down.
All right. Anyone else for pub comment? Warren, even though everybody in this room knows you, I need you to just state your name, your full name and your address.
Warren, PS 219 Haven Street. Thank you. I just want to comment on the, on this, on when Walter's, and with the transcript thing. Clearly, what he did crossed the line, and, and I think that, I'm glad the apology came, because I've only done 26 years so far, I'm catching this, Steve, yeah. But I do want to, actually reiterating somewhat what Steve had to say, I mean, we've, in all my years on the board, we've been threatened more than a few times, to the point we've actually had to have a police officer at our meeting to maintain decorum. Hasn't happened often, but a couple of times. So most of the time, when I, when that kind of thing happens, when somebody is that unhappy with something, it means that they don't understand it. And so as opposed to going after the, the person or the, or even the messenger, I think what it indicates is the fact that there needs to be a little more discussion, a little more explanation. So what, what we've done in the past on the planning board is invite that person in and ask them to sit down and say, what, you know, why are you mad? What is the question? Can we, can we answer more questions for you? Can we help you understand what it is that we're doing and why we made the decision that we made? Because, you know, and I, and, and on the planning board, there's a, anytime you put a new subdivision in, there's plenty of people who don't want it, because they only wanted the one they moved into, not the next one. So, so you, plenty of opportunity to deal with that kind of thing. So I just think that, that when you hear something like this, it's not necessarily as much a threat as perhaps a cry for help, you know, what, I don't understand this. And I think maybe the important thing to do in a case like this is accept the apology, but also understand there may be more people out there that don't clearly understand why the decision was made in the way it was made, and that perhaps a little more education is necessary on it. So I want to make that comment to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Good evening. Ruth Fiero, 18 Plymouth Street. Mine is more of a personal nature than what's going on with all of this, so I'm going to really, really, really show up with this. I would like just to hand this out to you, and hopefully you can get back to me and look at this, because I really don't want to take your time up tonight. It seems like a lot of people have a lot more things going on tonight. I don't know if you can get one to you.
If you have that.
Maybe you can just lift this over, please, and get back to me. Like I said, it's more of a personal nature than everything on this is going on tonight. I appreciate the consideration, because it's really important to me.
I am, I'm aware of your.
These are pictures?
Yep.
And if you can pass them around, make sure that everybody can see the issue that I'm dealing with in my home. Yes, certainly. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Fiero, we are going to take the act, take this as an action item, and I promise you, somebody from the town administrator's office will get back with you, and it's either something in writing, or at least a phone call and have a conversation, but you are owed an answer, so you can count on that happening, okay?
Thank you very much for your time.
No, thank you for coming in. Mr. O'Leary would like to say if you would.
Yeah, just, I've had several conversations with Ms. Fiero and with the town administrator in relation to the issue of Plymouth Street, and I too believe that Ms. Fiero is owed a more detailed explanation as to how things were handled, how it occurred, and what stage of the game it's at right now. You know, and it involves two things. One is zoning in relation to safe and adequate access, and the other is building close to wetlands. So there's planning board issue, and there's conservation issues. And, you know, I, I think we've somewhat addressed the, the planning board issues, and again, may not satisfy, you know, Ms. Fiero as far as what the outcome of that is, conservation issues in relation to timing and ability to adequately appeal the decisions and responses from people within town hall, and I believe she is owed an explanation, more detailed explanation in relation to how things were handled, and it's been ongoing discussion for several weeks.
And again, I appreciate all of you, what you do do for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other? Oh, Mrs. Doherty, please.
Good evening. My name's Maureen Doherty. I'm the editor of the North Reading Transcript. On behalf of the newspaper, I want to apologize to selectmen Chairman Mike Prisco, selectmen Andrew Schultz, and selectwoman Catherine Menipelli for statements that were printed and alerted to the editor, written by Mr. Walter Fitzmaurice in last week's issue of the transcript. We do not agree with Mr. Fitzmaurice's allegations. We apologize to the selectmen, all five of them and their families, and we will print to retraction in this week's edition. No malice toward any member of the board of selectmen was intended on our part in publishing his letter. And I believe that my coverage of the board from the time I started in August, in particular on this issue, showed clarity of what everybody's positioning has been on it, and it has been fair and balanced. And in response to Mr. Delaney's question as to why there was the clarification that was made in Mr. Fitzmaurice's letter, is when Mr. Fitzmaurice came in person to the office to give me his letter, and I looked at it, and I saw he had used the name of Mr. Delaney, who was no longer a public figure. I asked Mr. Fitzmaurice if he understood that he had made an error, and that there, he had listed the other members of the board correctly, and that there had been an election in the last year, and Mr. Delaney, in fact, had not been on the board in several years. And he indicated to me that he understood this, and he asked me if I would insert the name of the correct selectman, which happened to be Andrew Schultz, in place of Mr. Delaney. Because as you know, there is a standard that is, is higher when it, when the person is a public figure as opposed to stepping down and then becoming an ordinary citizen again. So that, that was merely a clarification on our part. And again, absolutely no, no, no malice toward any of you guys. Yeah, I'm here to midnight with you guys. I know how hard you work, and I just believe it was a misunderstanding on the, the letter writer's part as to what, what he was trying to convey. And I thank you for your time, and I apologize.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty, for making that statement. I, I apologize, I appreciate the apology, and I just hope that we can find some lessons learned in all this, so it doesn't happen again in the future. So if anybody in the community wants to be part of the public office, they can feel that they're going to at least get a fair shot, at least the transcript, at least have a, a fair process, that if somebody's going to make an accusation, that it's at least tracked, and that whether if, if you cannot find any evidence of it, at least let the public know that. And I think that's an important part of the process, and I'm hoping at this point forward, we won't have any more of this. People should have the right to submit whatever they want and say whatever they want. They certainly have that right. But I also think you have a responsibility, too, to make sure the facts are appropriate, which I will say, you've done an outstanding job since you've taken over in making sure the information is getting out, especially on this issue with the water. I think Mr. Mosseri and Mr. O'Leary have gone above and beyond to make sure the information has been public. We've given a lot of workshops and solid presentations, and you've done a great job capturing it in all of the past transcripts. So I just think we have a bump in the road here, Maureen, and I certainly think we find room for improvement, and I appreciate it. And, and Mrs. Menipelli, please.
No, and I also, I, I appreciate the apology. We all in this room know we're in this age where bots create content that people believe, and people publish false accusations or make false statements that people believe. And I feel that just as we don't owe, we, we shouldn't be exposed to those kind of false accusations, or certainly criminal accusations. We need more responsible journalism, and I, I understand you sit here with us till very late in the evenings on a lot of this, and I agree with Chairman Prisco. We have reached out and done a number of public commentaries on this. We, we, we haven't made a determination, a final determination yet. We have deliberated this, and there is such a significant importance to hearing differences of opinions that are founded on facts, because that helps us inform our own decision. But I also think that it, it doesn't mitigate the need for someone to come forward and disavow false facts, and it doesn't mitigate the need for the transcript to be far more responsible in terms of what it's doing with these, this kind of content. So I agree, it's unfortunate, disavowing the incorrect information is important, just as more responsible journalism is important here. And that's, what do I want to say about that?
I just want to state publicly, I've spoken to Ms. Doherty probably four or five times since this has happened, and she has been very gracious. She realizes a mistake has been made. I accept your apology, and I want this to end as much as anybody. And I just want to make sure the public, I don't want this to be harming the transcript. Maureen does a great job, and I use the word gracious, because she's shown nothing but graciousness towards me throughout this whole process since this story broke last week. I just want to state that publicly.
Thank you. No other public comments? One more, please.
Good evening. I'm Gillian String, and just for full disclosure, I am an employee of the transcript, but my opinions that I am about to express in no way reflect the opinions of the transcript. I am purely speaking as an individual. And so first of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody for your service. It's wonderful that you do volunteer your time, and you clearly work very hard with the interests of the town. But I just, I wanted to thank Mr. Delaney for giving us the definition of liable, but I just wanted to share that most recently, Schaefer et al. versus CBS Corporation reminds us that inferences are not covered under liable, so the media can't be held accountable for inferences people may make when they read an opinion statement. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fitzmaurice clearly makes an opinion statement in his letter to the editor.
I'm going to correct you. You need me to direct allegation, in my opinion, and I think 12 reasonable jurors in a jury box would agree with me.
We're not, we're not here to debate.
We're not here to debate you.
Certainly. But I do believe he said, "It seems to me that," which is very clearly an opinion statement. So just, just to clarify that point, and again, with the issue of liable, this letter to editor was posted within the transcript, which would be available to the subscribers of the transcript and anyone who wanted to purchase a copy in the town, but I believe, Mr. Schultz, you made it much more public by putting, posting it on Facebook for the town to read, so I guess if you were that concerned with a libelous statement, I was wondering why maybe you made it so public.
Well, I believe there's a few members of the board that have posted this, this issue on Facebook. I wasn't the first, because it's wrong. We sign up to be public officials. We sign up to be chastised, to be debated on our opinion. We don't sign up to be accused of criminality. It is a big delineation. I think you're doing yourself, if this, if this whole thing is on the path of going away, you're not helping your newspaper right now. My advice would be to stop talking, sit down, let this go away, because people are watching this at home. I don't think there's anyone in this town that defends the transcript's actions here. Those are the people that write your, that, that are your subscribers, pay your salaries. The businesses in town are the ones that pay for the advertising. I'm not telling you what to do, I'm merely suggesting I would stop this line, because I think you're going down the wrong path, and I think you really need to rethink what you just said. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Menipelli.
I'm not sure if I, I also think that there's a, is a misapplication of the case that you're citing, because we certainly are, as public officials, like my colleague said, open to criticism and open to debate and open to public debate over our positions on issues or our votes on issues, but we are not open to offensive allegations that are completely false. And we have the unusual scenario where we have a reporter sitting through our meetings, the entire meetings, which sometimes go till very late in the evening, and we all have families to go home to, and the reporter knows the facts in this case, and we just heard the reporters, you know, edit, editing the letter to the editor. My husband's a media person. I am a constitutionalist to the nth degree. I am a free speech supporter to the nth degree. I am a person who grew up in a family of politicians. I have alligator skin. I understand in this case is minimal likelihood based on the author that people are going to give it credence. It's the conduct of the transcript, stepping in and making corrections and printing something that the, the editor knows is inaccurate factually and in terms of a criminal allegation that is at issue here. And again, we want to move forward. We have a lot of business to attend to this evening, but I, I think you're misapplying that case to the circumstance, because we don't open ourselves up to allegations of criminal conduct. We certainly see that over and over and over again in the news with certain politicians, and that's very concerning to us, because we are held to a higher standard. We have a license to practice law, we have businesses in the community, and I'm also a municipal employee. So it's a triple whammy for us that we're business owners, family, and attorney.
And that's all I was saying, is that I interpreted it as.
We are going to move on from this subject, but the bottom line is, is at both sides, we need to take some lessons learned from this, and I think we can find improvements to make sure that we communicate better and that we don't weaponize the transcript to go after anybody in town to say whatever they want about anybody in town.
While still preserving.
Absolutely. And that's the, and that's the right way it should be. Whether it's legal or not, we're all human beings, and it's the ethical thing to do. Any other open comments, or public comments? No? Okay, we're going to go, we're going to just bypass all the new business, because we got a lot that we still do. We're going to try to sign the May town election warrant, and then, actually, you know what? I'm going to skip them. Signing the town warrant, and I'd like to take this opportunity now to recognize Mr. Decola, if that's okay. Because I want to make sure we have the time before the 7:30.
Certainly. And I also believe Mr. Ferriello is here to witness the signing as well.
Oh, he is? Let's do it, then. Go ahead.
So there should be a motion to sign the, sign the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the May 8, 2018 town election warrant. Second.
Actually, don't.
I have a motion.
Take away my second, since I'm on it. I'm going to vote anyway, but.
What, sorry?
I said, since I'm on it, I think.
It's legal.
Kate, second.
Yeah, I second.
Okay. Mrs. Menipelli seconded. Any discussion on the town warrant? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous. Okay. While we're signing that, Mr. Gobert, I will turn it over to you, if you.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we do have a plaque for the board to present through you, Mr. Chairman. We're here this evening to honor Jim Decola, who is our retiring building inspector. Jim, thank you for joining us this evening. As I commented at the last board meeting, at our last discussion, Jim's been with the town for over 30 years, dating back to his hiring in 1988 as the assistant wire inspector. In 1992, he became the alternate building inspector. 1994, he became a full-time employee, serving as a part-time wiring inspector and a part-time building inspector. In October of 2002, he became the permanent inspector of buildings, a position he's held since that point in time. He holds eight certifications, including that of a building inspector, building commissioner, electrical inspector, and has master electrician as well. Jim has maintained an active role in not only the statewide association of building officials, but also in his own education, continuing his familiarity with the codes, and I know has a deep understanding not only of the state code, but of the uniqueness of North Reading's local bylaws as well in administering them. And I guess a comparison that I, I'd bring up is, we talked a bit with the town engineer about the daily interaction with employees, and Mr. Decola is a face that, I'm going to hold my comments for a second as people exit the room.
If we could just, the outside crew, maybe, we can even move people in. We have plenty of chairs, and there's some right up front here and along the back. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. Thank you. So Mr. DeCola is a face that many property owners here in town have seen in order to improve their homes, to make simple repairs to their homes, to develop their property, to potentially construct a subdivision, all the way up to the largest of development projects, including North Reading Middle High School renovation and construction, the Edgewood Apartment Complex, and most recently the Polte Homes in New England Development at 104 Lowell Road. All of that construction comes through the office of the building inspector. And Mr. DeCola, his assistant who is here, Al DeSalvo, his administrative assistant, Kathy Morgan, who is also here, and also the prior administrative assistant, Michelle Mon, who I don't think is here this evening, but I know is a familiar face around Town Hall. They've all worked to assist property owners in the responsible development of their property. When town meeting takes action to amend our bylaw, to create a new zoning bylaw, it often comes to Mr. DeCola to implement it. And he's done so professionally with consideration of the needs of our residents for the past 30 years and we thank him for his service. So, Mr. Chairman, through you, we have a plaque for presentation. Ask Mr. DeCola to come forward for the presentation. And then maybe Ms. Doherty could take a photo, if that's all right?
(laughing).
Let me just read this. Okay. Just take a moment to read the plaque, Mr. DeCola, if I could. Presented to James DeCola in recognition of his 30 years of dedicated service to the town of North Reading, including 16 years as building inspector, given by the Board of Selectmen on behalf of a grateful community, April 23, 2018. Mr. DeCola, thank you.
(applause).
Can we just get one picture with the whole board? Right in front of my head?
Right here. Stand right there. What Mr. Missouri is still over there.
There's a little beans there, they're good stuff.
Jane? No Jane.
All right. Yeah, you can go over there.
Yeah, the far guy there.
Becky gets it.
(inaudible).
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause).
Jim's always a smiling face, but he seems to be smiling a little bit more right now.
Mr. DeCola, do you want...
Countdown.
Mr. DeCola, would you like an opportunity to say anything?
I'd just like to say...
Use the mic. You want my...
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the board, thank you to the town. I've really enjoyed working for the town for 30 years. It's been a great ride and I just want to thank everybody.
You know, Mr. DeCola, honestly, we do owe you a debt of gratitude for all the years. I think we take what you do for a living for granted a lot, you know? You don't hear a lot about safety problems or people's decks crashing in the yards or, you know, big problems created in our building projects because of the work you do. And I think we take it for granted. And I know there's probably been a lot of people, contractors especially, that aren't happy when you have to tell them, "Hey, this is wrong." But in the end, look, you know, when you say, "You don't hear about it because it's not broken, it's because of the work you and all the people in your department do." So thank you for keeping our community safe and thank you for making it a better place to live. And you should take a lot of pride in that as you go into your retirement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
(applause).
Mr. Chairman, through you, I'll just note that there are a number of town employees here, which is a further testament to the respect that folks here in town all have for Jim. So, thank you all.
And before we go into the next thing, can I just take a moment to recognize Sheila? I want to... I know, I'm sorry, but... Turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Related to the recognition we just, that this took place for Mr. DeCola, retiring building inspector, we have three new employees who are here this evening for introduction to the, to the community, two of which are department heads and one of which is senior position in the Department of Public Works. So we've chosen to recognize all three of them together. I believe they are here and I believe they are all in the room. They're all seated in the front there. Excellent. So I'll go through and just do a brief introduction and we just thought that there might be an opportunity just for the board members to put faces with the names, although at least one is a familiar face to some of us, having lived here in town.
If we could just get the folks outside, if you could ask them to just please... Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Sorry. It's usually not this crazy, I got to be honest. It came to a very interesting meeting this evening, so please, continue.
I just, I'll go through with comments on each of the individual board members and I'll just point them out individually for recognition. First, the new youth services director, Jennifer Ford, who's here, if you could raise your hand, Jennifer. Well...
(applause).
Jennifer lives in North Reading and has been appointed to the position of youth services director. She was selected from a pool of candidates who were evaluated by a screening committee that included members of the youth services committee. Ms. Ford comes to us with a background in education and counseling with a focus on youth. She was most recently the program director for teen living program and the step and step up programs in Lynn. Did I get that right?
Sure.
Okay. She has a bachelor's degree in education and psychology, is a certified nursing assistant, and has a certificate in nonprofit human services management. Her first day was almost two weeks ago now, I believe. So again, welcome aboard.
(applause).
Second is our new building inspector, Gerard Noel, Noel. Is it Noel Noel, Jerry?
Noel.
Noel, perfect. Gerard Noel. Mr. Noel has been appointed to the position of building inspector. He was forwarded from a pool of candidates that was reviewed by a screening committee that included the chief of police, deputy fire chief, and human resources director, and was also interviewed by the town planner. Mr. Noel comes to us with inspectional services experience in Middleton and Marlborough and is currently the building commissioner in... Boy, was the building commissioner in Boxborough. His first day was today, Monday, April 23. There will be a crossover period with Mr. DeCola, whose last day will be this coming Friday. Jerry, welcome.
(applause).
Finally, John Klipfel has been appointed to the position of town engineer. He comes to us from Jay Troppiano, where he was a superintendent and project manager for construction projects, including public construction projects. He has 11 years of engineering experience dating back to his experience at CDM Smith. He has a degree in civil engineering from Merrimack College and is a registered professional civil engineer. His first day was today, April 23. John, welcome. And I want to just recognize the prior builder, prior engineer and current acting DBW director for their assistance in hiring John. That's Mike Sorgen and Mark Clocks. So thank you very much for your efforts.
(applause).
So we've, we've mentioned that there has been, we've been in a period of transition in departments and these are some of the impacted departments, but we're making our way through and we're pleased to have three new faces with us here. Again, I want to give a special recognition to the members of the youth services committee who volunteered their time on the screening, including their chairman, Mr. Majane, who I know was here, but may not be here now. So thank you for your support.
Would you like to get a picture? Would you mind if three of you come up?
(inaudible).
Mr. Collins, it'd be good. Yes. It'd be good. Mr. Goburro.
No, all together. All together.
There you go.
Andy, no photobomb in this.
(laughing). (inaudible).
(inaudible).
Thank you for being a member of our team and we look forward to working with you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for the new members, our open comment is not usually that exciting.
Okay. Next on the agenda is approve the FY 2019 health insurance plan. Would you like to hold off and stick with the schedule or do we have enough time to do it?
We can take that up later on. I don't believe there's anyone in the audience here for it, so...
Okay. Then we're going to go ahead to the 7:30 capital improvement planning committee, review the fiscal year 2019 funding recommendations. And I believe there's going to be a presentation? Michael?
So we have a, we have a report from the committee, which I believe has been placed in Dropbox or is, who will be, being handed out in paper copy. And we have a slide that shows just the recommended projects that we'll put up.
Are you all alone tonight?
No, there are members of the committee here.
Julie's here.
Abby is here. Liz is here.
Good.
Oh, my goodness.
Kate is here.
You think they'd leave me alone?
Yes, I do.
Mike is here?
Mr. Chairman, before...
Hardly alone.
Before we ask Mr. Kelleher to present it, just for, you know, for those who may not be familiar with it here in the room, this is a committee that's meant for many months and put a lot of time in. And we've got a very, I think, a quality product in our capital plan because of it. So it may be a fairly brief presentation. I shouldn't say fairly brief, but you're seeing four months' worth of work cull down to a few minutes, 45 minutes, whatever it ends up being. So I just would ask everyone to keep that in mind as you hear what Mr. Kelleher has to say.
So we don't, we do have slides?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think this is a low-budget operation.
No, no. It's not there yet.
It's not there yet.
There you go.
Ms. Rourke, over to you.
I can start.
Okay.
First, I want to thank my committee members, who I think most are here, for all of their work in this, particularly Liz, she really does all of the heavy lifting on this. And the rest of us try to sit in, listen, talk about stuff, and come to some recommendations for you folks to make the final decision. This year, as you can see in the report that's in here, we had requests of about $2.3 million in capital requests this year. We're recommending about, almost $1.6 million. We're going to, we're recommending bonding a little over a million and using cash for about half a million dollars. So this is the table that's in the, in the book.
This is no different than what we have in our packets, right?
It should be in the FY 2019 budget folder.
Okay, thank you.
By way of background, when the committee was formed several years ago, one of our charges was that, that we review the needs of the town from all of the departments, recommend to the board those items which we think we ought to be either fixing or acquiring. But another, another factor was that we didn't want to increase the debt service of the town. We wanted to manage this in such a way that the debt service would remain at a constant level. Again, this year, we're, we're holding to that. The agreement was that we would, we would hold debt service at $1.1 million a year, exclusive of the work that was approved a couple of years ago for the little school roof, which came in after the fact and was treated as, as an outlier. But we have, we have held to that and that kind of guides us in where we cut things off. We looked at, as I say, about 25 items, talked with the department managers, did field visits to look at either facilities or equipment that was being, there was a request to either repair, replace, or to modify in some way. And then we all ranked them individually. And after the ranking, the, our individual ranking, Liz compiled that ranking and gave us an aggregate ranking, so we could see where we all fell on this end, what order the, the recommendations were coming in. Then we discussed them to make sure that there weren't any questions or misunderstandings on what it was that we were looking at or we thought was, was being requested. Liz and I worked after that to see, okay, what fits? And this is the result of that. So where we are in this, and I can't read that, but I'll read it from here, as I say, we're, we've got, the top part of this page are the items that we're recommending. And I'll go through them quickly and if there are questions, then we can take the questions. The first one that, that got the highest rating, the ratings go from zero to five, okay? So the top one was the INET and it received a rating of 4.89. Everybody thought that was extremely important that we do it. We need to replace it. Comcast is, is, is putting us in a position that we don't, we can't use the, the current system. And we needed to do this in order to have communication among all of the town facilities. It's a cost of about $350,000, then maybe some offset to that in money from Comcast and/or Verizon. We're not sure, but if there is, that's good. If not, we got a, we got a $350,000 cost that needs to be dealt with. We're proposing bonding this for 10 years. The next item on here is a, the, is the computer devices for the, the school system. This is an annual amount of $60,000 to get us to a one-on-one device to student. We're not there yet, but it's, it's moving in that direction. The, the next is stormwater compliance. We're required to, to do this. We didn't do it last year, but we, we have to do it this year. It's a $30,000 item and we're proposing that that be paid for with cash that we've got available, as is the computer devices. The exhaust removal for the DPW garage. When we did our field visit to the garage, one of the things that concerned most of us was that it was not a good situation there. In the wintertime, the trucks were all inside to get them started before they go out to plow snow or, or, or do whatever they need to do in, in the inclement weather. The current situation is they raised the, the garage doors to kind of air, air the place out. They've been doing that for years, but we felt that the, the request by DPW to do some sort of an air handling system in there made a lot of sense. This is really a safety issue and it needed, needed to be replaced and frankly, probably should have come up even before this year. Computer replacements for the town, $35,000. That again is a, an annual amount in order to keep the, the computer inventory up to date. Sidewalk machine of nearly, nearly $100,000. We have one sidewalk plow in town. If it's, if it's down, we're not able to maintain the sidewalks that we do for the schools. This gives us some, some redundancy there and also I believe some ability to do some more plowing on Main Street, although I'm not sure that the final decision has been made on that. But we're hoping that that, that's what it's going to be used for. Fire department had a request in for two cars and they're both about the same age. We recommended one of them and said, "We'll, we'll, we'll pass on the sec, the other one until next year," because we, we needed to get some other things in and we just didn't have enough, enough cash available to do both of them.
Can I ask you a question on this particular?
Sure, go right ahead.
You know, in the past, we haven't had the markings on any of our fire department vehicles and there's, there's no markings. There's no, yeah, there's no sales on the side of them. But can we make sure that this year, when we get these new vehicles, they, they are properly marked?
Yeah.
You know, it's something that's been brought up in this...
the wintertime, the trucks were all inside to get them started before they go out to plow snow or do whatever they need to do in the inclement weather. The current situation, they raised the garage doors to kind of air the place out. They've been doing that for years, but we felt that the request by DPW to do some sort of an air handling system in there made a lot of sense. This is really a safety issue, and it needed to be replaced, and frankly, probably should have come up even before this year. Computer replacements for the town, $35,000. That again is an annual amount in order to keep the computer inventory up to date. Sidewalk machine of nearly $100,000. We have one sidewalk plow in town. If it's down, we're not able to maintain the sidewalks that we do for the schools. This gives us some redundancy there, and also, I believe, some ability to do some more plowing on Main Street, although I'm not sure that the final decision has been made on that. But we're hoping that that's what it's going to be used for. Fire department had a request in for two cars, and they're both about the same age. We recommended one of them and said we'll pass on the other one until next year, because we needed to get some other things in, and we just didn't have enough cash available to do both of them.
Can I ask you a question on this particular?
Sure, go right ahead.
You know, in the past, we haven't had the markings on any of our fire department vehicles, and there's no markings. There's no, yeah, there's no sales on the side of them. But can we make sure that this year, when we get these new vehicles, they are properly marked? You know, it's something that's been brought up on this board when I first got here, and I believe under the rules and the way we were supposed to label our cars, except for the police.
Police and fire, but yes.
Right. No, even the fire. We should have these with the markings, the proper markings, with the North Reading seal on them on the side.
So I certainly don't have an objection to it. I'll consult with the fire chief and the public safety director relative to the implementation, make sure there's no unintended consequence. On its face, I don't see it being a concern, but.
If you read the policy, you'll see it's right in there.
So I'm not sure which policy it is that we're speaking to, but the policy that I worked to develop with the finance director, I believe it was, in 2014, it didn't, specifically by design, did not apply to police or fire. That's not to say that there isn't some value in it.
Yeah.
But we'll follow up on that.
The fire vehicle should be labeled.
I'm not disagreeing with the comment.
Okay.
Thanks.
The gym floor in the little school, this was another review that we did with a field trip to the school. Looking at it, looking at the condition of it, thought this was a prime candidate for some replacement. Its tiles, and as you can see in the picture up there, some of them have come up and have been put back in, and it gets an awful lot of use, the kids in the school, and I think also from some other youth sports activities. So we thought that was an appropriate item. Town roads. We've been trying for some time to build a reliable capital contribution for town roads of $300,000. We haven't got it done every year, but this is a supplement, the Chapter 90 money, which is about, this year's going to be about $815,000. I think we need to keep this up. In fact, I think maybe we ought to be doing more. I looked at the, the first time that we looked at the road program, I think was in 2012, and looked at the condition of the roads and the rating of the roads, and a rating of 80 is deemed to be acceptable. We were somewhere in the 70s. I don't know what we are now, but I suspect we're somewhat less than that. By example, back in 2012, we had some 11 miles of roads that were, the consultants said it needed reclamation. That number's about 22 miles of roads now. So I think we've gone backwards. And I would encourage the new DPW director, when he or she comes on board, to work with the consultant, to either this consultant or somebody else, if this is the wrong firm, put together a plan, stick to the plan, and see if we can't make some headway in improving the conditions of the roads in town, because I think we, I think over the last several years have gone backwards. We've lost some of the quality in our roads, and we need to recover that.
I agree with you.
Public safety, building foundation repairs. We've made a number of attempts at this, and there is a leak, and the leak has gone into the evidence room in the police department. They've had to do some moving things around. An attempt was made to fix it a couple of years ago. Apparently, it was not successful. It's been looked at again by some fresh eyes and are told that this should take care of the problem. So we're recommending this yet again. The multi-function activity vehicle for the schools, this has been on the list probably for the last three years. I think when we first saw it, we said, what a great idea, because it will allow us to take the smaller teams to wherever their games are being played without renting a vehicle. The school department is picking up a third of the cost of this in their operating budget this year, and this represents the other two-thirds. It had a payback, when we looked at it, of about three to four years. So this seemed to make an awful lot of sense, and this year, it is being recommended. Technology, technology instructional equipment. This is for the school department, for the elementary schools. It's whiteboards and the like. It's updating that equipment that has gotten a little bit old. Some of it was hand-me-downs from the middle and high school, the old middle and high school, and it is, there's some need to replace them. The DPW roof, this is another big one. The roof is leaking, and we need to do something with it. There's water. If you walk through the building, you can see where it is coming through. There've been some repair attempts made to it, but upon inspection, it was deemed that the roof, roof needs to be repaired. It's a big item, and it's on the bonding schedule for 25 years. And the final item that we have, are recommending, is a wheeled loader for DPW. There is one now. This would provide some additional support for winter and summer in the needs of this piece of equipment. The bottom of it are the things that we didn't do, and they will stay on there. We will look at them again. I'm sorry, Bob.
Oh, yes, Mr. Siri.
Don, I'm looking at the totals of the cash.
Yep.
And as you're adding, you get to 356,835, and then it goes down. Can you explain that? Or is that an error?
That's an error.
Okay.
The total is, I think we moved something afterwards. Yeah.
So the error, the 5,004, 504, 035 is it?
504 is the total number.
It is the total number.
Yeah. Yeah. I think maybe when we moved stuff around, we lost some of the formula in there.
Okay.
504 is the grand total.
504 is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
As I say, the other items that will be looked at by the committee, along with the fiscal '20, '21, and '22 items, will be the remaining items from fiscal '19 that we were not able to recommend this time. On the enterprise, the only recommendation we had, the only request we had, was some paving at Ipsos River Park from Parks and Rec. That will fit within their retained earnings, so they've got room to take care of that, and that'll be done. There are a couple of other smaller items they're going to do out of their operating budget. We did not get any requests from Hillview, and the water, we're meeting on Wednesday, providing you guys make some decisions tonight. If not, we'll meet after you've made a decision and take a look to see what we need to do with respect to the water enterprise. The next page is, I'm not going to go through it. It is simply the formulas that we go through to make sure that we've got a plan that goes out for the next five years, that we're, in the top part, where what we're going to be able to recommend, given what we know today on capital, what the debt service is in the middle on what is already on the books and what we're recommending, and then the bottom is the status of the stabilization fund. And the stabilization fund is entering this year at about $1 million. It'll end up, the end of the year, somewhat less than that, at about $922, and projecting it out over the next five years will be about $1 million, $1 million two at the end of this time period. That's very fluid. It depends upon what, the length of time, things are being bonded, how much we're going to try to do in cash. We're going to, on the top of it, we're going to try to recommend, right now, about a $450,000 a year cash. It's down somewhat from what we've been doing over the last couple of years, but there have been some very big capital items that were put on last year that have an impact on this. I'm not sure if it's in here or not, but there are a lot of very expensive, long-term projects coming down the pike. I alluded to them in the cover memo. With any luck, I'll even find it. I did find it. Over the next three years, items of over $100,000, and there are a lot of them that we're going to need to consider. There are more there than we can possibly do. So again, we're going to have to make some choices. One of the ones that stands out is items that are being recommended for town hall, and it comes to almost $2.5 million worth of items. So I think some long, hard decisions have got to be made about the status of the building, how long we're going to be in this building, and what kind of money we want to spend here. The boiler in 2021 needs to be replaced to a tune of almost $900,000. The plumbing, the estimate that we have right now is almost that amount or a little bit more than that for plumbing. So there are a whole bunch of things that are on this list that came out of the request. We asked the department heads to give us not only the current 2019 request, but to show us what was coming down the line, so that we could kind of think about how we're going to deal with it. And that's part of this table you're looking at here, was to see what can we do. A lot of these would probably be long-term bonding items, but we can only do so much, so.
Well, we have that feasibility study that we still have to do, that we got the funding from town meeting, and I know we've been, I think we have a schedule to do it at some point. But I think that'll be an important study to.
Yep.
Before we maybe take on some of this stuff, we get that study completed, I think it'll be helpful for you.
Yeah.
Do we have a rough timeline when we think we can get that RFP on the street for that?
I see it right now tied to the hiring of the public works director. If we come to a situation where we're not making an appointment in the short order, then we'll evaluate another strategy. But we're in the midst of that process right now, meaning the evaluation, the second evaluation of candidates, and I hope to come to a conclusion within the next few weeks.
And some of these things would depend upon timing. One of the items in here is the Parks Refrage. It's a $1 million two item. If we are able to get a grant for it, our cost is going to be $700,000. But the, I don't think there was an appetite to go forward with it without the grant. But if we get it, then we probably have to act fairly quickly.
Yeah.
And that's a $700,000 hit to us for that, with a half million dollars from the state. But that's probably the, that is one of the biggest things on here. But I look down on the list, and I see $4.5 million in requests for 2020, all by itself, of items that are $100,000 or more. And we know there's going to be probably a half million dollars, as there was this year, in items of smaller amounts that we're going to have to deal with, so.
I think we have to stay committed to the roads. Like you said, I don't think we can take ire off the ball in that any way.
I don't either. And if somebody said that the $300,000 isn't enough, and we've got the capacity to do the work, and wanted that number raised, I think that would have to be given serious consideration, because, as I say, I personally, I just think we're falling behind.
Yeah.
Maybe good intentions, but I think we're falling behind.
I drive around town. It's getting worse. Even some of these newer developments, I don't know why I would call them new, but they're 20 years old, but some of these roads are really in bad shape.
Some of them are 40 or 50 years old, Mike.
I know. That's what I mean. Even the 20-year-olds are starting to become bad now, and the 40s and 50s are beyond, I think, repair.
Well, that's why I think the reclamation, number of miles that are in the reclamation list in this report from the consultant is as long as it is.
Who's the consultant?
Beta.
Beta.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Keller, if you could explain to the public, I think that's a very good point, as far as the cost when we have to reclaim a road. If you could maybe explain the public difference between if we can catch it a year too early than a year too late, so to speak?
Well, the longer you wait, obviously, the worse condition is going to be. And so what you, and I'm no, not certainly holding myself as an expert in road repair, because I'm not, but the cost of reclamation, and there are others here that can probably explain it better than me, are, you know, more digging, more changing in the surface of the road to repair it than it is if you're just doing some other remedial work on the road.
And if I recall, it's about three times the prices.
Yeah, it probably is. But it's a lot of money. And the longer you wait, the more that get in that condition. And that was the point I was trying to make earlier, that we've got twice as many miles, in my calculation of this, in that category than we had in 2012. Not good.
Okay. Well, I do have one other question for you.
Sure.
In last year's presentation, we had asked for it. Maybe we forgot to ask for it this year, but our review on the past years?
Yes.
Capital?
Do we have that?
At least one slide? Do we have one tonight?
Nice.
He's prepared.
That'd be great. Is that possible to throw up on the screen?
We do review that as well.
You do?
Yeah. That's probably the first, our first meeting of the year, is say, okay, where are we? What have we got done that's already been approved?
While Ms. Rourke is pulling that up, I want to kind of get back to the building thing and the feasibility study. And I do, would like to see that as a priority, once we have the new DPW director in place, because, you know, as bad as this building is, the fire department, the fire building is pretty bad, too. And even though we've put a Band-Aid on it for now, you know, it's coming to its age. And the community is growing. We're bringing more people in. Their apparatus is getting bigger, I believe. Right, Chief? And I think we have to keep that in mind as well, amongst all the other things that you have in here.
And the building on the common is another one. It is in need of replacing the clavicle siding on it, at least some of it, maybe all of it. We had an estimate of about $150,000 this year for some repair to it. We've asked for a more detailed look at that to see, you know, what we can do, what the historic commission would approve. There are composite materials that could be used that would have a longer life. That's going to be an expensive project, but it needs to get done. We're going to preserve that kind of a building.
It's a beautiful building.
You've got to do it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Liz.
So we have FY '17 and FY '18 approved capital projects and the status of each capital project. I don't know if you want me to go through them one by one? You just want to look at them, see where things stand?
Just if we could just quickly hit the ones that are still in progress.
Sure.
If we could just get kind of a rough idea, when you think they'll be, because it looks like you got a lot of them complete, at least for FY '17.
Yes. Some of them I may not be able to speak to. I may defer to Mark Clark, the acting DPW director, as he is here, as several of them, or all of them, are DPW water-related. But I do know that the fire station interior improvements are almost complete. There's a very small remaining balance. A lot of work has been done there. Even the fire chief probably can speak to what is remaining to be done, but you can see that there's only 37,000 remaining. The other small amount under town buildings, this is the amount that gets approved for miscellaneous town building repairs. So it could be to replace a window in the town clerk's office that is damaged, or to put the darkening film on windows, replace carpets. So I know this remaining balance, at least to my understanding, is for the DPW director's office. There was an old air conditioner that was in the wall, and it's to fix the window.
It was basically to replace the windows in that office?
Right. So to replace the windows in the DPW director's office. So that is going to be complete. The next item is install water conservation devices, and I know that Julie, the building superintendent, has begun this project. I don't know, I believe some of them- I don't know, I believe some of them started at the fire station, but I don't know the exact status of that. And the remaining are water items, and I'm not going to speak to those. So either the town administrator or Mark Clark can speak to those. You know, a lot of them have to do with what direction we go in. But you can see that we did purchase the pump station land. Other than that, minor amounts of funds have been expended from the other line items.
Exactly correct. Just quickly, looking at this, those that are not completed in the water are tied to the MWRA Andover selection.
Yep.
And we have spent the first $50,000-plus in water distribution system upgrades. Those are the water main work that we do, sometimes in advance of repaving. So some of that work has occurred.
And then the work on the fire station is done, and that's just the, you came in under budget.
No, 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 that's not what I said.
It's not a hundred percent.
The work is almost all done. There is still some things to be done. I'm not aware of what those items are.
Okay.
But there are still some items to be complete.
Okay.
Can I just speak to you later?
Yeah, sure. Just grab the microphone, if you wouldn't mind.
So a large portion of the work at the fire station has been completed. Most of the first floor has been done, and asbestos has been abated. The remaining area on the first floor is the dispatch area, which we're waiting, because we do have some more improvements to do there regarding our dispatch area. Work on the second floor, the day room and the kitchen has been completed. It looks great. Thank you for your support. But we're also holding off on the bunk room portion, as we're coming up with different models to conform that area. So that's the remaining work at the fire station.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's for FY '17. For FY '18, project status update, this is a list of approved projects. You can see that some are completed, some are ongoing, and some have yet to be started. But I'll just note the ones that have yet to be started, again, are related to water. So the fire microwave communications is complete and up and running. So that is a great accomplishment. The library flat roof repair is, has a remaining balance of $14,000. I'm not sure if it's complete, or, you know, if there's more to be done with that. But a majority of it was expended already. Town road, this is now when they begin using the town road funds. They receive, DPW receives Chapter 90 and Town Road funds July 1st. So they have a very short window of time that they can, you know, use those funds. And they use Chapter 90 first, as Town Road money is bonded money. So if we don't need to go out and borrow for something yet, while they're still using another pot of money, they use Town Road last. We had a meeting this morning, or this afternoon, with the new town engineer, the acting DPW director, as well as the operations manager of DPW, to go over the lists of roads from previous fiscal years, what was done, what wasn't done, what their strategy is, and how they're going to move forward. So they are going to begin doing Town Road work between now and the end of the fiscal year. And then when the new fiscal year begins, they'll have their new Chapter 90 allotment, and they can work on the FY '19 roads that they have said that they're going to work on. And then they will, again, have Town Road funds that are bonded funds, that they will expend probably around this time next year. The next one is the IT computer replacement plan. Our IT director started last March, and there was still quite a bit of money left from the previous fiscal year. So he is working on our five-year computer replacement plan. So it is ongoing, and some of those funds have been expended. And we continue to replace computers on a daily and a weekly basis. The next one would be the bathroom facilities at the field. So the bathroom facilities at the fields are almost complete, as we all know, but they have not expended all of the pots of money that they had. So there was some money that came from free cash, and this is the bonded piece of that that we haven't expended from yet. Let's see. The Replace Engine 3, I can let the chief speak to this, but it is ordered. It takes quite some time to get that engine built. So we have not gone long-term on borrowing this, for this piece of equipment. So it does take some time, but we need the appropriation in place, because you have to pay per piece. You pay for the chassis, and you pay for the other pieces. But the chief can speak better to that than I can.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, it hasn't been ordered yet. We're vetting out through different vendors. We're close to the point of ordering it, so it should be done within the next month, I would say. And to the finance director's point, it does take about a year for that chart to get built, so we're almost there.
And it will fit in the facility as structured today?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I do not know the status of the police station plumbing repairs. They are ongoing. Some money has been spent. I know a new water heater was purchased. I'm looking at the police chief. So they are ongoing, correct?
Today, yeah, today they requested more of you. I'm not sure what the other repairs actually are.
Okay. Library plumbing repairs, again, no funds have been expended from that, so I'm not sure the status of that at this time. I don't know if the DPW director does. Okay. And then the remaining items are water items.
I did want to just speak to a couple of the water items. The first one there is the water meter replacement. That was the supplement to our town-wide water meter replacement. I do want to say, we, so we did a pilot test, and there's probably three or four people in this room that do have the new meters in their homes. I want to say thank you to the town hall and some of the finance committee members who stepped up to be the guinea pigs in that program. So what we've done is we've made, we're starting to mail out appointment cards, and we're doing it by sections of town. So if you haven't got one, don't worry, you will be getting one. But the first of those have gone out. On or about May 1st, we're going to, we're scheduling the initial appointments to start that first section of town. So we're looking at that going on between about May 1st and sometime late in this year to replace all the water meters in town. The three large items at the very bottom there, the million-plus-dollar ticket items, those are all relating to us going to MWRA. And obviously, if the decision is made that we stay with Andover, that money will be rescinded. It will be, it won't be borrowed. We won't spend any of that money.
Michael?
Mr. Sari.
Question regarding the water meter replacement. Since we were discussing it, I got a postcard, and I'm sure other people are starting to get them. And one of the comments on there was that you've got to clean, clear an area six feet in diameter against the wall. Do I tear the wall down? I think this is going to bring some questions.
And believe me, that already has brought some questions. They need room enough to be able to get to your meter. If you look at the meter itself, it has two nuts on either end that are seven inches apart. They need to be able to take the nuts off that old meter, pull them out, pop the meter out, put a new meter in, and tighten the nuts back.
No, I think I understand that. My comment was related to the info in the postcard. Perhaps they should change it.
Again, it's probably stock language they've used in every town they've done that, to say that, that five- or six-foot diameter around the meter. And it, yeah, it is confusing to people. That's probably the one question we've had that is most frequent relative to the meter replacement so far. Anything else?
Board members, any questions?
Just as far as the clapboards and coining on the library? That was on the docket there for a while. I don't know what happened to that.
It was on again this year, and we've asked the DPW building department to go back and look to see if there are any other materials that could be used. And it will be up for consideration next year. We just, we just put it off for this year, because we didn't have enough information.
No, it just continues to deteriorate, too, so that's the...
Yep, yep.
Good, thank you.
All right, good. Well, Mr. Keller, on behalf of the entire board, I want to thank you and the entire capital improvement planning group for all your time and effort. We know it isn't done overnight. It is over our entire year. So I know, and once you walk out this room, you're going to start the process for next year as well.
Mr. Chairman, just also... We're planning to meet after you guys decide on water to finish this year.
Yes, Mr. O'Leary.
Julie Kopke, you know, I know she's going to, you know, miss the capital improvement planning committee, probably more than the school committee. But again, thank you for your service, and enjoy your time away, I'm sure.
Great. Thank you, Julie.
We're a happier crew.
I'll take a motion, if we have one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the fiscal year 2019 capital expenditures as recommended by the capital improvement planning committee.
Second.
Have a motion, the second?
Second.
By Mr. Sari. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. opposed? Unanimous. FY 2019 budget hearing. Do we need presentation? Are you going to...
We have a presentation, which I'll ask the finance director, once she's done preparing the technology in the room, to upload to the Dropbox folder for ease of reference, the budget folder.
And while that's being loaded, if you don't mind, I'm going to excuse myself, and Mrs. Minipelli can run things for a second. I just need to...
Thirdly.
I don't seem to be responding. Just, I don't know, spending a bit...
This is what happens to me when I try to change the channel.
Maybe it rises and offering five meters.
Interesting.
They're afraid that the legislative changes, everything.
I don't know what's going to be a close, yeah.
Yeah.
It's always fighting, I'm just...
No, we're going to...
It's going to be two of them.
Right, yeah, I was going to say it's...
Two is three.
I can just load this one because, so I can take my flashlight.
All right. We're good to go?
We are, Madam Vice Chair.
Take it away, Mike.
Thank you. We have a PowerPoint presentation this evening relative to the Division of Public Safety, Public Safety Administration. This is the last department that the board will be hearing from during the budget hearings for fiscal year 2019. Just as a way of background for those maybe in the audience or watching at home who may not have followed, but we, the board voted to approve the implementation of a public safety director position in February of this current year, carrying us through the conclusion of fiscal year 2018, which will be this June 30th, 2018. The presentation this evening talks a bit about that, in the context not only of the fiscal year '18, but also fiscal year 2019, for which this presentation is probably most applicable. There, what do we, apparently have some technical difficulties.
That's why we need the capital improvement.
Here we go. Okay. So this is a re-presentation of some points I brought forward to the board in February. Why did we request this in fiscal year 2018? Phil, are you catching the audio pretty well, the way I'm standing here? Okay. So why was this requested? We talked about foreseeing a growth in public safety needs attributed to a few factors, including substance abuse, population growth, and demographic change, as well as the impact of our desired commercial growth. Transition going on in multiple fire department positions, as well as inspectional services departments, and the increasing expectations placed upon emergency management. We talked a little bit about that transition earlier this evening. Looking at the sustainability of the fire department staffing approach, specifically looking at the reliance on callback to provide that first alarm response, and the manner in which we implement that. Looking at civilian dispatch and the potential to consolidate dispatch as civilian, freeing up existing police and fire personnel to address growth-related needs. There's also a response to some board feedback relative to myself and the individuals in my position, being able to delegate their responsibilities. And we also felt that the timing was appropriate, because we were in the midst of the budget recommendation process at that point in time, back in January and February, for fiscal year 2019. This chart shows the administrative divisions of the town without the public safety director position being in place. You can see the number of direct reports to the town administrator. The two divisions in which we previously had implemented the division head position were Public Works, which has a director, and Finance, which also has a director. When you look at the current public safety table of organization with the director positions filled, you see that there are five divisions that show up here that are now underneath that director's supervision, specifically Police, Fire, Emergency Management, Building, and Health. This slide talks about the existing staffing in the public safety departments that fall underneath the umbrella. The goals I outlined for the public safety director over the course of fiscal year 2018 and '19, and beyond. Consistency of policies among the public safety departments where they were practical. Having a unified overall command structure pursuant to our town charter. Again, that idea of planning for long-range public safety services. Providing the additional administrative support for transitioning departments. Supporting and improving emergency management, and a fresh eyes perspective for opportunity for innovation, to have a uniform public safety official who could challenge and question the status quo. Again, this slide about, talks about dispatch, which is something that we're looking at implementing in fiscal year 2019. And we spoke about that at the Saturday budget hearing, which was presented by the police department. And we've targeted an implementation date for April of next year, which is the last three months of this upcoming fiscal year. We looked at the potential implementation options, again, it's a slide that the board has seen previously, you know, trying to keep an open mind. Establishing a dedicated standalone director position, we estimated that cost would be upwards of $125,000 plus benefits, perhaps as high as $175,000. We looked at a part-time standalone position, feeling that the part-time presence was unlikely to be as effective as a full-time employee. Contracting out the services, we looked at that, but we felt the responsibilities were such that they needed to be held by an employee. We ultimately landed on the combined position, very similar to the finance director, town accountant position, which Ms. Rourke holds in the finance division. It was the recommended course of action. The chief of police carrying public safety director responsibilities, with a cost of $30,000 plus a fiscal year 2019 allocation of $10,000 for any required overtime in the police department, in the event there were administrative duties that needed to be fulfilled by someone other than the police chief. This slide is just a bit of a progress update, in terms of things that have happened in the few weeks that we've been in place, guiding the hiring and promotional process in fire. So when we promoted the chief, we created a vacancy behind him. We then had a retirement, which created a second vacancy at the same rank. Promotions beyond that create vacancies in the fire department at the firefighter level. So it's the so-called domino effect that requires quite a bit of effort. And again, doesn't just happen however we want it to happen. It happens within the confines and the constraints of the civil service process, which has worked as we've moved through the process, but obviously has its restrictions. And having a professional, public safety professional with experience in that has certainly helped us move those hiring processes along and advance the missions of the department and its chief, the fire chief. The hiring of the new building inspector, which we talked about earlier, I won't belabor that point. The budget process, reviewing the fiscal year '18 and '19 budget, recommendations and adjustments made were necessary, and will be reviewed later on this evening, or actually in the next agenda item. process, but obviously has its restrictions, and having a professional, public safety professional with experience in that has certainly helped us move those hiring processes along and advance the missions of the department and its chief, the Fire Chief. The hiring of the new building inspector, which we talked about earlier, I won't belabor that point. The budget process, reviewing the fiscal year 18 and 19 budget, recommendations and adjustments made were necessary and will be reviewed later on this evening, or actually in the next agenda item. Looking to streamline the processes and procedures amongst the public safety departments, that's been happening on an ongoing basis, probably most, interestingly, it's been happening as much in the Fire Department as it has been here in the Town Hall. So it's been, you know, again, this really was a discussion about multiple departments, and it's happening, and I think we believe it's been productive. Again, reviewing current practices and procedures to identify inefficiencies, that's something that's been ongoing. We've talked a lot over the past three years, probably more, four years, I should say, and probably more, about exploring software for permits in both the Health, in the Health and Building Departments, as well as the Fire Department. And that's something that Mr. Noel will play an active role in, but there will be administrative oversight by the Public Safety Director. Recommending and installing new programming at the Fire Department, similar to the digital police headquarters that we use in the Police Department, again, an option where there's an avenue that was out there to try to modernize and give the management, we're being held accountable by myself, the Board, and the community, to have the tools to manage. So very quickly, we've taken some steps to try to improve that, but there's a lot of work to be done. Again, freeing up the town administrator to dedicate resources to non-public safety matters where needed. So that's the conclusion of the slideshow, just to give folks kind of an idea of what the intention was, to give a broad update relative to where things stand. I'll give you my candid, you know, feedback. Looking at this, I think it's achieved everything that I hoped it would achieve in a short amount of time, and I think it will achieve all of the things that I hoped that it would achieve when I brought this forward to the Board back in February. And I think that's for a variety of reasons, again, timing probably being the most important one, having a seasoned department head available and able to step in in that fashion, having a transition in the departments, and having, yeah, the opportunity to maybe change the direction or where things have gone in the various departments where needed. I think that it's worked well for us so far, and I think that there certainly merits continued implementation in fiscal year 2019. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Chairman.
We have any questions, or may we make any comments on this budget? Mr. Burden, you, any of the department support, do they have anything?
I mean, I've talked to, you know, the department heads, and I know that they have informally indicated their support, spoken within this evening, that they certainly could have the opportunity to speak, speak their mind as to how they think it's working or not working. Or the members of the Finance Committee for that matter, I know that there was a discussion held by the Finance Committee back in early April or end of March relative to this budget as well. Sorry. Turn over to the Fire Chief.
Please, to the podium if you don't mind.
Thank you, I just wanted to take a brief minute to let you know that, speaking about the Public Safety Director as a new chief and department head, it's been extremely helpful to me, in some of the bullet points that were illustrated on the slideshow, to have somebody to fall back on that's already been there and walked that road, and navigating the promotional processes and dealing with civil service, bouncing ideas about where I wanted to go with the department insofar as something as simple as different computer software, and then getting the chief's perspective on what he's done, and seeing where we could take that. So it's been very helpful to me personally, so thank you for the support.
Thank you. Mr. Bracy, and then Mrs. Harlberg, okay?
Thank you. I just want to echo the chief's comments. I know for us at the Board of Health, Chief Murphy has been extremely helpful. We've had some, you know, tie-ups in the past with streamlining administrative processes, where, you know, unfortunately, the town administrator's been extremely busy, you know, with getting back to POs and things like that to kind of keep the flow going for us with our, you know, Title V consultant, our food service consultant. I know Chief Murphy has been extremely helpful in that process alone, that has helped expedite that process where, again, you know, Mike's busy, meetings and stuff like that. He's also been helpful in other areas with, you know, guidance and, you know, support for us with the administrative staff when I've been on vacation, because we're just a one-man show here, myself and my administrative assistant, Amy DeChara. So when I'm not around, we do have a temporary fill-in, but Chief Murphy has, you know, stepped up to make sure on a daily basis that, you know, if there's anything that Amy may have needed, or any kind of technical support, he's been there. You know, another issue, a perfect example is today, we had an issue with, you know, an attorney calling us, and, you know, Chief Murphy took the reins on that after him and I had discussed, and he kind of streamlined that conversation with the attorney, which I think helped expedite the situation, one, and two, it helped us from not having to go to Copman Page, where, again, I think that saved the town some money by just him doing that alone. So I talked to the Board of Health on this on a couple of different occasions, and they're very supportive of the Director of Public Safety being there in that capacity, and so I think it's worked out great for us.
Thank you. Mrs. Harlberg?
The Finance Committee, for the most part, saw the preliminary discussion at the VOS meeting in February concerning this, and last week at our Finance Committee, we further discussed it, and as a part of our budget review, we voted unanimously to support it.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other questions anymore? Mr. O'Leary.
Glad to hear it's working well, but I still remain opposed to the concept and idea. Again, I think a lot of what's been facilitated and helpful and should be part of the organization's method of operations anyway, I think that the fact that, again, I don't see the need for a Public Safety Director. I don't see any of the community around us like-sized, I don't see any community around us that is twice the size, that has a similar setup, and I think the costs associated with it, it's not the $30,000, it's the fact that we have an employee that's going to be getting well in excess of $200,000 a year. I said, it's not warranted. I don't think any position in the community at this particular juncture and point in time warrants that type of a salary, and I think the public should be well aware and be able to weigh in on it. Again, I, nothing to take away from it, Chief Murphy does a terrific job for us, runs a great department, and has been extremely helpful with anybody who reaches out to him. I just think that it's a, it's a bad precedent for us to be setting. I think at the salary levels is something that we're going to be have to, looking at going forward to sustain, I don't think it's sustainable. And I think that, you know, if there are other resources needed, you know, for the town administrator to free himself up, to meet his mandate under the Charter, then we should be looking and talking about that. I don't think we should be creating a Public Safety Director to oversee the Board of Health. I don't think we need a Public Safety Director oversee the Fire Department. I don't believe we need a Public Safety Director oversee the building inspector. You know, there may be some questions in relation to whether or not some of these individuals can even legally answer to this individual. So it's, I just think the structure is unnecessary, I think the costs associated with it, while it's, you know, only $30,000, I think what we're doing is setting a precedent for continuing to fund this position going forward, and again, it's, it doesn't warrant it. So I remain opposed to it. I applaud the efforts that have been put forth and the progress that's been made. Again, I think some of the progress that has been made should have been able to have been made anyway, regardless of whether they have a Public Safety Director or not. I believe that the town administrator should, again, still remain the ultimate person responsible for hiring of department heads, overseeing them, and I don't think putting another layer of senior management is warranted, and I don't intend on supporting it. And I think, you know, as far as what happens at town meeting, I haven't decided yet whether or not I'll offer an amendment to, to remove the $30,000, but that may very well be the case.
Mr. Schultz.
I think it's a little bit misleading to say it's a $200,000 position, it's a $30,000 position, and it's going to save this town so much more than that over, you know, every year and year over, over and over again. I'm not sure why, so, you have the opposition to this, because to me, you've just heard of department heads all saying, this is really helping us, it's working. We're trying to streamline, some departments have had some trouble in the past, and we're able to do that now, and it's working, why would we want to stop going on that path for $30,000? To me, I don't, you know, I respect your opposition, I don't understand it. It just doesn't make any sense to me, it's just my two cents.
Again, I think if I, if I were to maybe have weighed in a little bit sooner, or been asked away a little bit sooner, and we had discussed this in years previous, you know, there is no doubt there's an awful lot of work on the town administrator's desk in plain. To me, you know, resources and additional administrative staff is probably as warranted, if not more warranted, to assist in the day-to-day operations and delegating responsibilities. I think the delegation of responsibilities to a position which, combined with the other responsibilities that this individual has, is in excess of $200,000, is difficult for me to support. I, in good conscience, cannot support paying an individual in excess of $200,000 a year to perform functions for the town of North Treding. And again, it's not the chief's fault or responsibilities here, and again, as far as, you know, what his salary is and what the salary was established initially, we've gone over that numerous times. But I think we have responsibility to ensure that for the size of our community, that we appropriately pay people for the positions and the responsibilities that they're responsible for, but we also have to keep it in check, and also keep in mind that, again, if we need additional resources, human resources, then we make the pitch at town meeting for that. But I think there comes a point in time where we have to draw the line as to what the value of any position in this community is, and at some point, people have to make a determination as to whether or not they want to continue to work here for whatever the pay is, you know, or if they're looking for other opportunities at a higher wage, there are other places to go, larger communities that can afford it. I just can't in good conscience support putting this all into one position that, again, puts a salary in excess of $200,000.
Can I have one just clarification? Please.
For town administrator, we're not putting this into one position, this is a separate position, in the sense that if we were to lose our Police Chief, the new Police Chief would not automatically be the Public Safety Director, correct?
So, the, the position, the position exists as a separate position in the budget. So if you look, there's a fiscal year 2019 request for Public Safety Administration with Public Safety Director, Personal Services. The incumbent who has the position is both a Police Chief and has those additional responsibilities assigned to them, and is compensated, stipended for that. That's effectively how it's been implemented. Should there be a change in that position, we'll evaluate what the appropriate structure is and what the need is, and that's no different than anything that we've done in any other position that's come in, in my time here at least, nor is it any different than what we do with the budget from year to year, when we look at what the budgetary needs of a particular department are. So, you know, the short answer is, no, it's not something that I believe that we are locked into. I think that there's a benefit to us by having some continuity in it, but I think, I think I was fairly upfront, I think I was upfront with the Board as to why I was recommending the course of action, it was because we had a seasoned individual here that could implement the position. If we didn't have that, I don't know that I would have felt that that would have been a route we could have gone down, I, you know, again, hindsight's 20/20, but I...
So you're, just if I'm reading you correctly, hearing you correctly, these are really two separate positions, just right now, we happen to have a candidate that can do both?
Correct, yeah.
Mrs. Minipelli.
That was, I think, when we have discussed this previously, I would love to see this as a fully funded standalone full-time position, but I also, you know, later on in the agenda, we're evaluating our town administrator, who we ask to say, what can you tell us to do to make it better? We need to support him with these types of services and available, we did have the availability to give this, the $30,000, as a part-time type of a capacity, or less than a full-time capacity, I would like to see it as a full-time. And I do think it's in the Charter, so I wasn't here previously when it was contemplated to be appointed before, but I'm glad that I was here to be able to do this, and I think that from what we're hearing, it's working, and I do hope it uncovers some additional efficiencies in terms of how the departments are managing themselves, and I think right now, especially when we last heard from the town administrator, where we're seeing a huge turnover, we're losing people that have been here 30 years, and people that have, you know, been in service, dedicated service for a number of years, that I think it's even more important to have this figure in place, helping to direct these different departments. So I'm, you know, I understand where you're coming from, in terms of your perspective, but I'd love to see it as a full-time standalone. And when we first discussed implementing it, we were talking about a uniformed individual serving in that capacity, and we have that person, and I think it's great that he's working out great in the position right now.
Mr. Messeri.
I haven't changed my mind from before, I wasn't in support of this, because I think of the, and it's got nothing to do with the Police Chief, you know, I firmly believe that in the position that he's been put in, he can do the job. I just think we're organizationally creating a problem. If someone came to me and said, this is only a temporary position to fix some things, I could go along with it, but I view this as going down a path that we're going to be sorry for in the future. So I haven't changed my position. It's not exactly the same as Steve's, and if, and I won't be putting a motion to, on this article, to unfund it.
Well, it's pretty unfortunate that the two of you are taking that approach, when you look at the amount of responsibility we later on this town administrator, and we're trying to become more efficient in getting his job done, and the amount of public safety issues that mount on his desk, his ability to react to all of them with the right quality of time needed, I think we've heard for a little bit tonight how effective this is in just a short period of time, I think is paying big dividends for $30,000. And I do hear you continue to say, if we need to get more resources for him, let's get more resources for him. You've got to put the money aside for this one individual and look at the big picture. We're becoming far more efficient, even, we haven't even heard from the Finance Director, but even the Finance Director has to, I have to assume, has seen some benefit just from the standalone, and this is not a shot against the town administrator, he's been laid with a lot of responsibility, which means he's spread thin, and his ability to respond effectively and efficiently becomes very difficult. So for her to finish her job and getting these budgets all pulled together, and you take, you saw his original organizational structure, that was massive, to get a mo, all those budgets together and meet with every one of those individually, and give them the individual time they needed to be real efficient in pulling those budgets together, I would have to assume, I don't know this for a fact, but I have to assume, there had to be more efficiency in pulling those four departments together this year than we had in past years. That was just my assumption, but I would love to ask, I hate to put you on the spot, but if you wouldn't mind sharing, do you see a change in the ability, at least getting those public safety budgets pulled together, and were we able to find efficiencies, were we able to analyze things differently than we ever have before? Please.
The Police Chief, myself, the Fire Chief, the Fire Chief, as you know, came on board January 22nd. It was not his budget that he developed for FY 19. So the three of us sat down and spent five hours one day going through the budget and finding areas that were not necessary, and we were able to bring that budget down substantially. So it is working, it's a great, great position, it's not just... It's not just to help the fire department, it's to help the building department, it's to help the Board of Health. The building department has many changes that are, you know, coming along, whether it's 104 Lowell Road or it's the implementation of a new permitting software which affects the fire department, code enforcement, the Board of Health. It includes all of those departments and this has been something that we've wanted to do since I started in 2011. So there is so much that needs to get done and it's not a one-person job. So, you know, I, I think that there is progress being made and that we need to see, see that progress through.
So this is a really good example and you say that, you know, five hours, it takes five hours of the town administrator's time to really focus and you actually achieved, you said you found some savings?
Close to $100,000.
So I, I just think you're looking at this all wrong. I'm trying not to convince you to change your mind, but I'm just asking you to sit back and think about it a little bit differently. I don't know if you have a personal issue with the particular individual, you've got to put it aside and look at the big picture here. There's just one example where we saved almost $100,000 of efficiencies in one department and I have to assume the others have learned something through the process. But the biggest point I'm trying to make here is that it's five hours of the town administrator's time that allowed him to go and work on other things to, to continue to keep moving us forward to meet our strategic plan that we put in place. So, and I, but, and I will give you the floor, Mr. O'Leary, in a second and Mr. Schultz as well, but I, I have to ask this question because you, you know, you keep on saying that we're going to have a problem down the road. What possible problem could we have down the road? Please, I need to know this because I've heard this now a couple of times, but there's no substance.
That was actually my question as well.
Mr. O'Leary.
First of all, to infer that I have a problem with the individual is totally incorrect and unfortunate that it was stated.
Okay. Well, you didn't vote for him, you didn't vote for him to begin with.
Didn't vote for who?
So I have to assume.
No, I didn't vote for the position.
Nope.
I don't support the position.
When the chief was hired, it was a no vote.
I did, I don't have a vote.
Okay. I apologize. I didn't mean to offend you, I'm just saying, I just.
I have the utmost respect, he's doing a fabulous job. I think he's done a terrific job and, and the utmost respect for him. I believe that, you know, first of all, I don't believe the public safety position is required or necessary to bring about these efficiencies. I mean, I look at other communities and how they operate and how well they operate and it's not with the public safety director to help alleviating some of the responsibilities of the town administrator on a day-to-day basis and doing the research and doing the analysis and, and assisting department heads and pulling things together. It's done with additional resources in the form of, you know, whether it be an assistant town administrator or some other administrative support, which is probably more warranted, and again, I would not be opposed to, more warranted in relation to actual responsibilities and taking them off of his, his table and his plate. You know, to me, you know, the responsibility ultimately lies with the town administrator and we don't necessarily need a public safety director to take care of some of these efficiencies and to help coordinate an effort to bring about efficiencies. So I strongly disagree with the position of public safety director. Unnecessary. I've seen other communities operate very efficiently and very well, very effectively, you know, with additional administrative support to help coordinate things. We're talking about permitting systems and things of that nature, you know, which would more or less fall under the finance director's oversight, but with administrative support and helping pull together and do the research and the analysis with it. So again, it, it's not, it's the public safety director's position, first of all, unnecessary and I'm opposed to. Secondarily, again, I go back to the salaries in relation to what we're paying an individual and I don't think, I can in good conscience support that. But that's more, more secondary than it is the public safety director's position. It's not necessary to effectuate a lot of these changes and an awful lot of the efficiencies that need to take place. Again, we're growing, there's an awful lot going on, there's a lot of responsibility on the town administrator's desk that he needs some relief from, but I don't think he needs relief from responsibility and I think the, the support can come from other administrative staff, not a public safety director. It's not, it's not a formula that's, it's been tried in other communities and stopped.
We've never been a traditional community. We haven't, we've done things untraditionally here. We've, we've tried to explore new ways of doing things and the PFA is another example. And look at the success we're having there at the PFA, the participating funding agreement. We've tried to branch out and I'm, Mr. O'Leary, I'm not trying to be argumentative with you, but you mentioned these other communities. I guarantee you, you go look at the organizational structures in these other communities and they have far more administrative staff within each department than our departments have had. They don't have the resources. That's why having somebody to get, and give them the more quality of time to help them be more efficient for $30,000 is far more return on investment for the town than bringing in another $50,000, another $60,000, another $80,000 and even bringing in, quite frankly, another $180,000 to be a deputy. It's, it's proven to be more efficient. And I think if you give this a little more time, give it a year or two and see the true results and then when you have the opportunity to vote for this budget in a couple of years and you don't see the efficiencies and the return on the investment, I mean, there's $100,000 right there in just a short period of time. If you don't see it, I will be the first one at town meeting to support you in saying, "It didn't, it failed." But don't kill it before it even got started.
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, I think we all agree and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, that we want to take some of the public safety issues off the TA's plate. I, I think we're in agreement on that. I just don't see how those types of issues can be given to somebody at an administrator level. I think you need professional level to deal with those issues. I, they also think what the police chief's current salary is irrelevant to this discussion at all. I mean, I don't know what that has to do with the price of tea in China. It's, the cost of this position is $30,000. We're not married to it. Mr. Town Administrator, I'm assuming if this doesn't work out, we can get rid of this position tomorrow if we wanted to, correct?
So again, any appropriation, any position, any, any dollar we spend is subject to appropriation at town meeting. If we end up in a situation we don't want to request it funded at town meeting?
So we have something that's working. It's $30,000. If it doesn't work in the future, we can defund it. Why are we even arguing about this? I, I don't get it.
One more thing and then we're going to get to the public hearing. Okay? Mrs. Minipelli.
If you located $100,000 and we have 30, why can't we do $130,000 standalone position?
We'll get to that. $100,000 is needed for the FY19 operating budget.
And I, I also, I, I agree with my colleagues that because it's, it's an elevated appointment, cloaking it with that authority is what means and makes the difference versus just an administrative lateral colleague looking into sort of these kind of management duties. Because it's an appointment and because it's as a directorship, that's what gives that, that position, the authority to be able to peel back these things in these different departments and ha, gives that appointment the oversight. So I, I think it's important and I also think it's not necessarily giving our TA free time or extra time or, you know, taking things off of his plate. He's been directing his focus to other things that he's trying to get done or maybe get things done more quickly. So I think it's great, I think we need to support him when he asks us for things like this, just like he asked for the human resources director. This is something he proposed to us. We've heard that it's working, so I think it's important to support him when he comes to us and tells us, "Here's a need that I have. Help me do my job by implementing this."
Okay. Thank you. We'll get to that. Oh, sorry. Please, don't worry. Mr. Keller.
I guess my, my view of this, and I take it from my experience in business, is that you've got a CEO of this community effectively and you guys are the board of directors and you've charged him with certain responsibilities and expect him to get things done. I think he deserves a little leeway here. If it doesn't work, it's a reflection on him and his, and his managerial skills. If it does work, he gets a lot of praise for it, but I, I, I think you've got to let, as you said, you've got to let, you've got to let him try it and see whether it works or not. I've got a lot of respect for, for, for Michael. If this is how he wants to run the administration of the town that he's charged with, with caring for, then I think he deserves the support of, of this group to, to get that done. If he, if he's successful at it, wonderful. If he isn't, he's got to, he's got to deal with that.
Well said. Thank you. Is there any other comments or participation in this? If not, we're going to go to the next agenda item, which is, sorry, Mr. Yule. Oh, Mr. Yule, please to the podium or to the seat here, whatever you, if you're more comfortable, just state your name.
Thank you, Jeff, U of 427, Park Street. With this position, it's $30,000 a year and I'm guessing that as long as the current chief is in that position, that this new position here will go with him or stay with him. But when the current chief retires, and you mentioned about the standalone employee for this position, do you have an idea by itself as a standalone, what it would really cost to have this position going forward? Assuming that the responsibilities would have to be separated from the current, from the new, new chief? If you don't have that person that is capable as, as the quality of the chief that we have can, can fill that position? So what would it cost to maintain a standalone position as described here?
Excuse me, I think the slide, okay, please.
As we were cited, actually, speaking of that. When we were considering the options for implementation, up top here, full-time standalone director of public safety, you know, just based on the salary structure here in North Reading, the so-called going rates for public safety professionals and, you know, mostly in police and fire, but when you, when you look around and look at how it would fit in, you know, our rough estimation was you're looking at really $140,000 to $190,000 when you include the cost of the benefits.
So therefore, looking in the future, we're looking at addition to the budget of approximately those numbers.
Nobody agreed with me as a standalone, so.
No, I understand, I understand. I just, just want to, I know Steve, Selectman O'Leary, has questions about the impact it's going to have on the future. I was looking at it strictly from a dollar perspective because of all these things. The program, it sounds like a very good program to me and things that need to be done, okay? But I'm looking at financially for the town and for the taxpayer that we're possibly looking at an additional $140,000 when, if we have to fill this position. So that's, that's my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're going to, going to the FY 2019 operating budget informational hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we have a hearing notice, which we, in order to make things difficult for Selectman Schultz, didn't provide him a copy of. I'm happy to read it if you like.
Oh, please do. Yes.
Do you need the light on? Oh, you're young, you don't need it.
So I'll read it briefly and then I'll give you the good news. Town of North Reading, notice of budget informational hearing. The North Reading Board of Selectmen does hereby notify the residents of the Town of North Reading that an informational hearing on the fiscal year 2019 budget contained in the annual warrant will be held Monday, April 23rd, 2018, at 8:45 PM in Room 14 of Town Hall. Interested residents will be given the opportunity to be heard, submitted by the Board of Selectmen. The good news, Mr. Chairman, is that perhaps I was a bit aggressive in the timeline in trying to make sure things were in order before my absence a couple of weeks ago, so we scheduled this informational hearing. But we're not in a position at this point to go through the extensive presentation for a couple of reasons. First, we, we haven't had our, we have an upcoming financial planning team meeting this Thursday, which we'll be attending. Second, out of deference to the school committee, they've not voted on their final budget, which they won't do until next Monday, as I look to the finance director, I believe.
I believe so.
So I, I think it would be premature for us to finalize things with the budget, so I'm going to ask the board to continue the hearing to our next meeting, which is May 7th, in order that we may conclude our effort there and go through the detailed presentation that we annually provide the board on the whole budget, including the operating budgets here and out of Town Hall, the school department budget and our fixed costs. That said, we do have information we'd like to review in the form of an update that the finance director has put together and it's mostly aimed at our recommendations for reconciling the Town Hall's budget based on available revenue from the revenue plan as was reviewed with the board at the last meeting three weeks ago. So we would like to conduct that, that exercise. And I'll ask, if she's ready, the finance director to go through the presentation and you'll see some ideas we have there. We, we tried to be responsive to the board's comments throughout the budget process over the past few weeks in light of where things stand. We were aware of, of a problem which became a bigger problem, meaning the solid waste contract, which was out to bid through DPW, which we'll speak to here as well. But I, I think what I would encourage you to do is look at this as our recommendation based on what's going on in the revenue plan, the document that we submitted in the big binder back in February and making these potential alterations to it in order to balance the budget come June town meeting. And with that, I'll turn to the finance director.
As the town administrator mentioned, what we're presenting this evening is what you saw in the revenue plan a few weeks ago prior to our last financial planning meeting as well. This budget and revenue plan has not been updated to reflect the House numbers. This is the governor's budget figures. The House numbers have changed slightly with, with, mainly with Chapter 70, but when I say slightly, it's, it's not a huge number. And then the offset for the increase in Chapter 70 revenue that we received, they then increased our state and county charges. So it really is not, not a substantial amount to, to our revenue plan. I believe it's between $15,000 and $16,000 net, that makes a difference. So what you see is the revenue plan from three weeks ago. This is no different than we go through every year. You, we have our tax levy, we have new growth and in the new growth number of 508, we have 104 Lowell Road, which included a slight adjustment of about $43,000. So we had been carrying $90,000 for new growth on 104 Lowell Road and we increased that about $43,000. We have debt exclusion. This is made up of the high school, middle school project and prior debt excluded projects, the police station and other various school projects. We have unrestricted state aid, Chapter 70 state aid and reimbursement from SBAB, which is now MSBA. And this is annual payment that we receive, rather now they do a reimbursement-based program. Local receipts, this is made up of various sources. This includes the trash fee, motor vehicle excise, investment income, it's a whole slew of things, mail tax, municipal Medicaid, license and permits, fees and forfeitures, a whole various slew of items in that figure. This figure grew with the initial discussion of investing the proceeds from 104 Lowell Road, where we can invest in a CD in upwards of 2% of an interest rate. So we increased our investment income from $10,000 to $260,000 to represent investing $15 million in a CD. Other financing, other financing sources is made up of transfers from various stabilization funds, water indirect costs, parks and rec indirect costs, cell tower revenue, there's a whole, whole bunch of transfer, transfers. Then we come down to the breakdown of the budget. We have fixed costs and then we have the town's budget and we have the school's budget. The fixed costs come off the top of available revenue. The fixed costs are made up of debt service, regional school assessments, workers' comp, Medicare, health insurance is one of the largest ones, Middlesex County retirement assessment, so there's, there's a mix in there as well. And then the town's reconciled level service budget and as the town administrator mentioned, this does include the increase that we received for the sanitation contract and the school's level service budget. Now, this is the school's level service budget, this is not their modified level service budget, so I'm just using. so I'm just using the level service figure. We both still have budget gaps at this time, as you can see. The next slide, we will go through some budget adjustments that we've done on the town side, and I will speak to some ways in which we can address the increase in the sanitation budget. The sanitation budget increased substantially over FY eighteen, and I can also let the acting DPW director speak to it as well, but it is a substantial increase.
What's the, the modified level service budget for the school department? What would, what would that number be?
As of the last financial planning meeting, the modified level service budget for the school department is approximately thirty-one million, two hundred thousand, round numbers.
But what does that do to the deficit?
The deficit, obviously, it would increase it.
Yeah, yeah, just curious as to what the delta, what the delta is.
I can tell you what it is.
Well, it's two thirty-four for the level service, but modified.
It's four hundred and eighty-two and change.
Then that's plus the two thirty-four.
So it's, 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 yeah, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more.
So I'm taking the available revenue for the, the school department. So it's not plus the two thirty-four.
No, 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 I know, it's included, no, so it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more.
Yes.
Yep.
The modified is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more, that's what I'm curious about.
Okay, all right, moving on to the next slide. So these are the town's FY nineteen budget adjustments. We've gone through all of the budgets, we've had all of the budget hearings now. The town administrator and myself have met with all the department heads, and we then have called through every budget to see where we can achieve some, some savings in order to balance the budget. So the first thing that the town administrator is recommending cutting is the TA social media coordinator professional services that he had in his budget of ten thousand dollars. The Board of Health extra nurse hours. Now, this was above and beyond what is regularly budgeted in the Board of Health budget. Police Department, as well as in, in the Fire Department when we get there, but I might as well just speak to them once. Police Department and Fire Department rise in data lines. Now that Microwave is up and running, they no longer need to pay those bills anymore. The Police Department's budget number for those monthly bills was about a hundred dollars higher than the Fire Department. I believe it was three eighty versus two eighty in that range per month. The Police Department Animal Control, they've had a vacant part-time animal control position for a few years now, two years now, and the police chief, you know, is, is at this time allowing it to be cut. The Finance Department, we had added in for FY nineteen, five extra hours per week for the Assistant Finance Director. She currently works thirty hours per week, and at this time, we can't fund that, those extra hours. The Fire Department, as I mentioned in the discussion regarding the Public Safety Director, the Fire Chief and the Police Chief and myself met and went through line by line the Fire Department's budget. We examined what got purchased out of it, what needed to get purchased out of it, each line, and we were able to reduce expenses that way. Operation salaries and overtime, this was not reduced by us doing anything. It was reduced by movement within the department. As, as mentioned, and as everybody is aware, you know, Captain Stats became Chief Stats, that made a vacancy. And then Captain Nash retired, that also created a vacancy. So two firefighters moved up to be one a permanent captain and one a provisional captain, making two firefighter positions available, reducing the average overtime rate. We're in the process of hiring one firefighter, the next firefighter won't be hired until FY nineteen. So that is the reduction in operation salaries and overtime, it's due to movement within the department. Code enforcement, admin assistant overtime. So the building inspector included in his budget additional staff for one oh four Lowell Road, part-time building inspector, part-time plumbing, part-time electrical, and admin overtime hours for the administrative assistant. All of those expenses were pulled out of the department's budget because they will be funded in a revolving fund from the permit revenue received from one oh four Lowell Road. This was an oversight, that it was left in his budget. So we're not, you know, cutting a position or anything like that, it will be funded from the revolving fund, but this was left in there. We are adding back in the Police Department Clinician. The town administrator was recommending that the new position of the Clinician start in January. We are able to add it back in and have it, have it begin in September. The Police Chief had requested that it begin in July. After discussions with the Finance Committee, as well as with your board, the town administrator is recommending an increase to the EDC professional services expenses to fifth, from, from five thousand, so he's increasing it to fifteen thousand more for a total of twenty thousand, which is what the, the Community Planning Director had requested, was twenty thousand for EDC. And sanitation, so sanitation had a large increase to begin with, within its budget. Well, after the RFP process, we received two, and, two, two bids, and we have decided at this point to go with a one-year JRM contract extension and begin the process now for next year's contract with, with, with a vendor. So this is above and beyond what we had already increased the budget and what we had submitted to the Board of Selectmen. So then, the total net budget adjustments is two hundred and sixty-eight dollars after we've made our cuts and made our additions. So you may be wondering why I say we still have a budget shortfall, and the reason for that is because we need to do something regarding sanitation, whether it is a transfer from the Sanitation Stabilization Fund to directly offset the sanitation budget, or, and/or, I think it needs to be a combination, the trash fee needs to be adjusted in order to cover this. There's no other way. It's a substantial increase over FY eighteen, and I, I can, Mark is well versed in this, if we want to discuss it.
What's in the stabilization fund?
A hundred and twenty-five thousand. I don't suggest taking all of that. I suggested to the town administrator, you know, taking a portion of that.
Questions for the DPW director? What are we talking about as far as suggestions in relation to trash fee increases?
So.
We will shoot the message.
Sorry, so if, if a hundred percent of the increase were to be applied to the trash fee, the current trash fee is fifty-six dollars and fifty cents a quarter, it would go up to the neighborhood of seventy-two or seventy-three dollars a quarter. It's about a thirty percent. And what we're looking at, and this strictly relates to the recycling market, we're looking at about a thirty percent increase in our sanitation budget over last year due to changes. China will not take the recyclables, the market has crashed. More people were getting paid for recyclable materials now, they're having to pay to get rid of them at this point. You probably followed some of the, some of the information that's been in the news, but the town of Wilmington's having a, their trash hauler is on the verge of declaring bankruptcy just due to this issue. They're in year four of a ten-year agreement with them. So, long answer to your question, but it would have to go up by about thirty percent. Last time we raised the trash fee, it went from, I believe it was forty-five dollars a quarter to the current fifty-six fifty, and that was in, at the beginning of FY oh nine, so it was, it'll be ten years ago this year.
You said you got two bids, and that's for the new contract?
So we put out a request for proposals. If you remember, the former director, Andrew Lafferty, was here with Ed McGrath, and went through, and the board made a number of suggestions, asked them to go out and look at a number of different alternatives for hauling and collecting trash. And we put that on the street and basically had twelve basic alternatives between recycling and trash collection, and had just two bidders, one being our current hauler and one being another trash hauler. They didn't all bid on all twelve of the items. So one of the items was to continue with the one-day-a-week Tuesday collection. An alternative to that was to go to a five-day-a-week, thinking we'd get more bidders into that. Our current hauler bid on the one-day-a-week, the other hauler bid on the five-day-a-week. So we didn't even have apples to apples to compare to. Our current bidder was a little bit lower than, than the comparable or the other bidder in terms of parent, as close as we could compare services. They also, they also gave us an alternative to go with a five-year, buy-in with them again. We were reluctant to do that. One of the alternatives we put out there was also to go to automated collection after year one. So we're too close to the start of the next fiscal year to get new carts and go to an automated collection system. We felt if we went with the, the current manual collection system for year one and then went to an, an automated system in year two, that would be an option. But again, it was one bid on it, one did not bid on that, so.
Did our current hauler do that?
They're, they're willing to talk to us about it, they do not currently do that. They're, they're primarily doing the, the old manual collection system. The automated collection system obviously makes a, an investment for them upfront. They have to buy machinery to be able to do that. They're not gonna enter into a one-year agreement with a community to do an automated system because they've had, they have to obviously spread those costs over a number of years. So the, I, I don't think the intent was to have people decide on the sanitation tonight. I believe it's gonna be on the next Selectmen's meeting to kinda flush this out in more, more detail.
It would be good if we could, for the next meeting, sort of have a little structure broken out. You, you talked about the seventy-three dollars increase per quarter. What would be your recommendation, but the, sort of the combined, using some of the stabilization money and then increasing the rate? You know, if you can give us kind of a ballpark on, maybe a couple scenarios? We'll leave it to us to make a decision. But if we can get that information in advance of the meeting, so we can just look at it and process it in our own minds individually and then collectively discuss it, would be appreciated.
So we have a fairly decent package of information we could distribute to you right now. It doesn't have that last financial piece to it, but I could work with the finance director and we could come up with that, a couple of alternatives for you.
Mr. Schultz.
I just wanna clarify, we haven't had an increase since fiscal year oh nine?
Not in the trash fee.
The trash. And it would go from fifty-six to seventy-three or so?
Correct, per quarter.
I mean, does it make sense to have small annual increases so we're not, our residents aren't getting whacked all at once? Because I don't think fifty-six to seventy-three is really that much, if you're talking about almost ten years.
It, it's not, it's about, it's under a three percent increase per year. The, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, the current trash fee structure has generated a small amount that's gone into the stabilization fee every year, as it currently stands. So that fifty-six fifty was actually covering the cost of the entire solid waste program for those ten years. It's been a fairly stable cost program. If you look at what JRM has been charging us, long-term, it's been very, very stable. It's the collapse of this recycling market that's causing a huge spike this year.
So I guess.
Now, we, we could have done that and thrown more money into the stabilization fund by increasing the fee every year, but.
Should we increase the fee every year just by a small amount so we don't have these big spikes? And we're gonna have the same net effect to the ratepayer?
Well, we would have, if we had done that every year and increased it, we would have banked a lot more into the stabilization fund over that time. A smaller increase would allow you to have, obviously, a lesser increase, you know, in any given year.
Mr. Minipelli.
I think the whole point of the, the fee is to cover the cost of what it's costing us on that long-term agreement, though. I, I wouldn't be in favor of just randomly increasing that amount just so we can add to the stabilization coffers. I mean, it's a contract that we would put into place, so we would know what the cost is long-term, and that's what the fee is based on. But in terms of this one-year contract and the additional extension cost, that hundred and fourteen, what next year following, are we prepared for another increase in year two? And what, what was the response like in terms of something more long-term? And what were the dollars that they were talking about in terms of the two bids that we did get?
The, the longer-term agreement, or a five-year agreement with them would have driven the cost down per year for, for the five years versus the one-year increase. Nobody's really comfortable saying what the costs are gonna be going into the future because nobody knows what the market's going to do. One of the things we did include in the bid was a recycling processing fee, where we actually asked the bidders, tell us how this would work. You know, come up with a formulation where if the market starts making you money, we, we stop paying so much for recycling, you start paying us back. Or if the market goes the other way. It was a built-in safety factor, so that it protected the town's interests to some degree and protected their interests to some degree. I, I'll share the numbers that I have with you for, for the next meeting.
Thank you. Anything else?
I, I'll just add one more thing. So the, the one other factor that we don't know is if we're looking to go to the automated collection a year from now, that was a big unknown in the bid as well. And there was a third party that, their bid consisted of, we're not gonna quote on this because you're not being definitive about where you're gonna be, if you're gonna be automated a year from now. They wanted more, more structure to it. You know, we tried to bid it, so we had as many options to go as many, in the best interest of the town as we could. And some of the, some of the people out there apparently aren't that comfortable with that, they wanna know. Nope, beginning July first next year, you're gonna have the automated system in, and then for the next five years of that contract, we'll deal with you under an automated system. So it's, it's a market that's in flux, right? So don't throw your money into it.
Thank you for all your work on that. Mr. Yule, if you wouldn't mind. It's fine.
Thank you very much. I guess I should repeat, Jeff Yule, four twenty-seven Park Street. I too have been following the, what's been going on in China, the recycling issues, and they're not taking much trash from us. I don't know if that's the right way to put it, but, but the, is this a, a good time for to begin dialogue, to begin to roll the trash fee into our taxes? So it'll become tax deductible? The number's now beginning, becoming higher than it's, than it's ever been. Seventy-eight dollars may not be a lot of money, but to some people it is. But rolling it into the tax as a deduction, so that conversation, this might be a good impetus to have that conversation. We're on a one-year contract, and that's an increase, correct? That's why.
In addition.
That's in addition to the submitted FY nineteen budget increase.
Right, okay.
So this is a over and above what was submitted for FY nineteen, which was already a twenty-five percent increase.
Right, okay, so in the negotiations you're having, if you mentioned a five-year contract, are they interested in doing that at this time? Because that would not seem to be to their advantage, to have a five-year contract when, when the cost may escalate significantly. Are, are we in a, in a position where they're gonna be forcing us to have maybe a one, two, or three at the max contract because of the, what's going on in the industry? And is JRM interested in a five-year contract as it is?
So our conversation with JRM, they are interested in continuing doing business with the town of North Reading. We've been doing business with them for a number of years. Again, we tried to provide them some protection by allowing them, in their bid, to include a formulation based on the market for recycling, to have a fair cost in there for recycling. So if they know they're not gonna be losing, and apparently they're losing a lot of money this year because they're raising this cost this much. We've had a number of conversations trying to pin them down and, and tell us where the money's going. But it, and you can find it in, in the news, as you mentioned, Jeff, that the market's crashed and people are, are losing a lot of money. If they're, if they're guaranteed to make money, yeah, they wanna sell, they wanna take in more trash or do more collection than, than they do because they can. trash or do more collection than they do because they can spread their costs over, you know, a greater, greater base and, you know, therefore make, I don't want to, more profit, I guess would be the.
Yeah, well, they would need to do that. I guess, I think trash collection costs are going to increase dramatically even going forward from this point on for the next five to 10 years unless China changes their approach right now. But it's going to be a big cost to us at, you know, going forward, so.
There's no doubt about it, and that's why I think we'll get the information over the week, over the next few weeks. We'll be discussing this in more length at our next meeting, and we'll be in a position to have to make a decision. But everyone does understand, every community throughout the Commonwealth knows that this is a big issue impacting everyone, not just unique to North Reading.
Thank you.
Any, thank you, Mr. Yul. Any other questions? So Mr. O'Leary.
Just in relation to the, putting it into the tax bill, question, comment. Based upon the new tax law, for those people who are just above the average assessed valuation and happen to have a job, do you absolutely no good because it's going to be capped at $10,000, combination of state income taxes and real estate taxes. For those people that have smaller homes and low real estate taxes and low income, they're probably not going to itemize, so it won't do them any good either, at this point. We live in the wrong coast of the country.
And technically, just to add to that, it isn't actually a tax that we can just slide or roll into the real estate taxes, it's a fee. And I think we also have other regulations that prohibit us from just adding things into.
Well, this was originally, this was originally in the tax bill, and years ago when we implemented the old, for those who have been around a while, those orange stickers, that was the first flush it, trying to get it out of the tax law where your tax bills, the tax bills were subsidizing the trash pickup. And then we got away with it and took it all out of the tax bill and made it a self-sustaining, fee-based system. So originally, in itself, some communities, it still is part of the services that are delivered. But again, if we do that, other services suffer.
Right. Well, we'll discuss this more in our next meeting. No other questions? We'll move on to the next agenda item, okay? We're going to discuss the MWR, Andover Water and Waste Water.
Mr. Chairman, through you, we have a presentation, I say we, but I did very little, Slough and Messeria, Larry, Acting DBW Director Mark Clark and Rob Williamson, Mike Stein from Wright Pierce, put together a presentation that will take you through this evening that I think puts a lot of the information kind of in one place, both in terms of what's happened since last September, the technical information that's been able to be gathered in that time, and recommended course of action.
I'd like to just take a, maybe a seven, eight-minute recess if we could, use the facilities, allow them to put their presentation together, try to be as quick as we can. Thank you. Let's get started, folks.
Yes, I've been gone for three weeks. We're going to turn it over to the experts.
We all set, Michael?
We're ready.
Okay.
Maybe.
Let's roll.
Maybe.
So we're going to start with just a single slide itemizing the current status, and then Wright Pierce is going to go through and present their technical findings that we've asked them to do, leading up to the eventual filing of the FEIR. So the status is as follows. In Andover, the 99-year legislative request has been approved by their town meeting, special town meeting, second one. Wright Pierce engineering study is complete, and North Reading home rule petition regarding Andover has been submitted to the legislature. On the MWR side, Wright Pierce engineering study is again complete, North Reading home rule petitions regarding Reading submitted. That's related to shuttling the water through Reading and having, being, agreeing to pay a shuttling fee. And then previously completed, the Wright Pierce water engineering study and the North Reading home rule petition to join MWR, they were approved by the state back a while ago. With that, I want to introduce Rob from Wright Pierce.
Thank you. Is that coming through, all right? All right, okay. Yeah, my name's Rob Williamson. Most of you know me, I'm your project manager from Wright Pierce. So tonight, myself and Mike, Michael Stein are going to talk about some of the results from primarily the water system evaluation of Andover's system that you asked us to take a look at. And then Mike's going to talk a little bit about some of the wastewater alternatives that we were also tasked with. So I'm going to talk primarily about the water stuff in regard to Andover's water system. I'm going to tell you a little bit about their source, their treatment system, their distribution system. They're going to go a little bit into infrastructure improvements that North Reading might want to consider to make that were part of the master plan that was done years ago that are kind of required for both, no matter which way you go, Andover, MWR. And like I said, Michael will talk about the wastewater stuff. So in terms of Andover, I want to talk about first their source. So their source is primarily generated, they pull water from what's called Haggots Pond. They have a treatment plant right on the southern end of the pond, and there's a deep hole right here. It's a, it's quite a small body of water. They have about six to seven days worth of storage there in a safe yield of about 1.1 MGD, just a fraction of what their maximum day demands are, which can approach 12 to 14 MGD. So they supplement Haggots Pond with water from Fish Brook and the Merrimack River. So let me talk a little bit about those. So from the Merrimack River and Fish Brook, they have a pump station that pumps over to Haggots Pond. What's important about the Merrimack River is although Haggots Pond is a very small water body, small source, the Merrimack River is virtually a limitless supply of water. It has a watershed of over 5,000 square miles. It starts way up in Franklin, New Hampshire and flows out in Newbury Port there. It's a water source used by many, many communities along its banks, quite a few in Massachusetts. The city of Havel right now is developing withdrawal from it. So it is used extensively as a drinking water source. In terms of quantity, the river on average flows at about 3.4 million gallons every minute. That's enough to meet and exceed North Reading's demands for an entire day. So when I say it's virtually a limitless quantity, it's, it is virtually limitless. It's a huge watershed. The water quality from the Merrimack is, you know, somewhat typical of most big river systems. It's decent. It requires treatment, but again, there's many communities using it. Now, in terms of watershed, I want to point out, this is the watershed that you currently withdraw from, the Ipswich River watershed. It's only 155 square miles. It's, it's just a fraction of what the Merrimack River is. So right there in itself, you can see the difference between the two and the benefit in quantity that you will derive if you choose to go with Andover. And moving on to treatment, and by the way, I'm just going to broad brush a lot of these things, and we can, we can talk about them, I'll address your questions afterwards. In terms of treatment, they use a process what I would call is conventional treatment. Their plant was built in the 1970s, it's been upgraded a number of times since, most recently in 2015. Uses fairly advanced treatment technologies, they use ozone, sand filtration. The plant has a overall capacity of about 24 MGD. They don't approach that right now. They have plenty of excess capacity, their demands, like I had said before, their peak demands are about 12 to 13 MGD, so they're only using about half of the capacity of the facility. The things that you want to be concerned with is all the major process systems have sufficient redundancy. And what that means in engineering terms is you want to be able to supply the greatest demand that you're ever going to see with one of your primary process trains out of service. They have that ability in any one of their trains. So they could lose one train and still provide their maximum day demands. And that's even with the North Reading demands as well. They have full backup power capabilities, in other words, so if the power is, primary power is lost, they have generators there available to continue producing water. So there's no, no concerns there. So now moving on to their, their water distribution system, just a quick overview, you know, North Reading's distribution system is primarily one pressure zone, means everyone sees about the same pressure. In Andover, they have three pressure zones, they have a west, a central, and an east. The one that we primarily focused on was called the East High System, that is the one that serves North Reading. And I'm going to get into that in just a minute. Throughout their entire system, though, they have five storage tanks with almost 14 million gallons of storage. Some of the things that we found that were deficient, the East High Zone is deficient in storage redundancy, and again, the East High Zone is the one that you want to be concerned with. And what that means is they have two storage tanks, a one MG, a one MGD, one MG, million gallon tank, and a three million gallon tank. That same rule, if one of your primary systems is out of service, you still want to be able to supply the peak demands. Well, if they lose, if they had to take their three MGD, or million gallon, tank out of service, there wouldn't be adequate supply capacity. What does that mean, though? They have pumping capacity, it would mean there'd be a loss of firefighting capacity in Andover, so that really doesn't impact you. But it is something that they recognize that they're going to have to address in somewhat near, near term to provide that, that storage redundancy. The other thing about the tanks is they were all relatively older tanks, they're 60 to, 40 to 60 years old. Just due to age, they're going to require attention, and Andover realizes that. But again, that doesn't really impact you, per se. So this is real quickly, an overview of their system, showing the zones here. This is their west zone, way over here in the green. The blue is their central, that's their primary zone where the treatment plant is located. And the red here is the East High Zone, and that's the one through two connections down here that feeds North Reading. I'm going to zoom into that little zone right here. And again, this is the one we were primarily concerned with, because it affects you. So they, this is Andover's system in the East High Zone, they have the two, two storage tanks at one site right here. They have what's called the Bancroft Reservoir and Pump Station. That reservoir is actually connected to the central system, but there's a pump station that draws from that reservoir system and pumps into this system. And that's, that's a six MGD tank, six million gallon tank, so there's plenty of storage capacities there to take care of the system. And then, as I mentioned, already, North Reading has two existing connections where you receive water. You've got the Main Street connection where primarily most of the water comes from, and there's a Central Street location. Right now, on a typical peak day for North Reading, Central Street produces about 350, 400 gallons a minute, and the Main Street connection supplies the rest of it. Main Street is much more robust in terms of its capacity. So we did, what we did with Andover's system is very similar to what we did with, when we looked at Reading's system, as far as their ability to convey water through their We modeled it, we obtained a hydraulic model from them that we used for the analysis. We modeled it assuming that North Reading, under worst-case conditions, would be taking three MGD for their own purposes on top of what Andover's demands are. And then we looked at two of the, two stress conditions, under maximum day demands for both communities, and then maximum day demands plus a fire flow on, coincident, in Andover's system. Those are, in engineering water terms, those are the two stress conditions that you want to be most concerned with. And we looked at two different scenarios for pushing water into North Reading. We initially looked at splitting the flow between the Main Street connection and the Central Street connection as you operate now. And then we assumed all flow, and the second scenario was assumed all flow would come through Central Street. Not Central Street, through Main Street, and Central Street was offline because we wanted to see what the impact would be there. And I should add that we didn't, we didn't put in here, but we met with them a couple weeks ago and talked about potentially even adding a third connection there sometime in the future that I can talk about in a little bit. So what were the results of both of those stress conditions that we modeled? Under maximum day demand conditions, and that's where North Reading would be receiving three MGD, and Andover would be receiving their peak demands, currently, I said, somewhere between 12 and 13 MGD, you will get all the water you want. The connection and their system is more than sufficient to provide that supply of water. The only two issues, or the one issue that we saw, was that at the higher demand flows coming into North Reading, at the three MGD, the fee coming down Main Street, that pipeline, the water velocity in that pipe is going to be high by engineering standards. Typically, we like to see velocities in the pipe, something less than two feet per second. With the Main Street flowing at three MGD, we were seeing anywhere from four, five, even perhaps up to six feet per section, second in the main. What does that mean to you? When there's higher velocities in a pipe, you run the risk of essentially scouring the pipe of sediment, natural sediment that falls out from the water, and you create dirty water. That's the biggest risk to you. However, we don't think that's a tremendous risk because Mark has flowed that connection. We've done tests on it, he did a test on it last fall, I believe, flowed two-plus MGD through it, had no dirty water conditions at all. So the likelihood of that sort of thing surfacing are, are small, it would appear. So it's not a big concern. But from an engineering perspective, that main right now, through Main, down Main Street is a 12-inch main, it really should be a 16-inch main, if not larger. Then we looked at the maximum day demands plus a fire flow in Andover's system in the East, the East High Zone that I talked about. Now, again, under that condition, so this is the worst-case condition, this is when the most water that a system has ever expected to see is going to happen. The good thing is, in that case, North Reading is still going to get their three MGD. It's not going to affect you whatsoever. What it will do is it's going to affect Andover. They will not get the fire flows that they need in their system. We modeled fire flows up to 3,500 gallons a minute, which is the highest required fire flow that a system is required to provide for large commercial businesses and the like, and they are in that east zone. They're not going to get those sort of flows. They may get 2,000 gallons a minute fire flow while everyone else is getting their maximum day demands. That's an issue for them. We presented that to them, they concur, they realize it's a problem on their side of the line, but again, it does not impact North Reading. So those were the, the supply, the treatment, and the distribution system, real broad brush, those were our findings. In our opinion, things look, they look good for North Reading. Wanted to point out, for infrastructure that's needed, prior, we did the analysis for MWR. There was quite a bit of infrastructure needed in the town of Reading, in addition to what was required in North Reading. Infrastructure requirements, if you were to connect to Andover, what would be required are two rechlorination facilities located at the two interconnection points, both at Central Street and at Main Street. What happens is that the chlorine residual that Andover feeds, by the time it gets to North Reading, is, in some cases, it's low to almost zero. So what North Reading's going to need to do is reboot those chlorination levels to provide the proper disinfection. That's done right now by the treatment facilities, the three treatment facilities that you, or two treatment facilities that are running across North Reading. two treatment facilities that are running across North Reading. Ultimately, when you connect with either MWRA or Andover, you're going to be abandoning those treatment facilities, so you're going to need to provide rechlorination facilities. And then other upgrades that will be required within Andover's system, and this is true for both MWRA or Andover, is there's several water main replacement projects that are recommended. Those were identified in the master plan that was done several years ago. Those primarily are to ensure proper firefighting needs, fire flow capacity. The Tower Hill Tank, that is your oldest tank in the system. That's a tired tank. It needs some repairs to it and some safety upgrades, so those should be made. And then, as I mentioned, you'll be decommissioning the existing water treatment plants and pumping And that was it on the water, but I was going to turn it over to Mark. Mark was going to talk a little bit about some of the costs associated with this, and then some of the pros and cons of supplying or obtaining water from Andover or MWRA.
Just go back to the, before you go away, Rob.
Yep.
Can you go back to that last slide? So just to make sure I'm understanding this fully, regardless, we're going to have to put a different pipe in down Main Street.
No. No, you are not, you, on who's side? On your side or their side?
Our side.
On our side, it's recommended. In order to get the, to be able to provide proper firefighting capabilities, yes, you do need one down Main Street.
Similar question, what if we had a fire flow and Andover had one at the same time?
The fire flows in North Reading would be met by your storage.
Okay.
So these costs are not in what we're going to see next, right?
They are. They are, yep, they are in there.
In the timeline, you work with the DOT because we obviously have to work with them for the Main Street, right? Would that be a long stretch?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, please continue on.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm here, I'm not going away, so if you have more questions.
So just on the Main Street main that you're asking about, Mike. So the main coming in from Andover is a 12-inch main. It's 12-inch main down as far as Boroughs Road, and then it reduces down to North Street, and it bumps back up to 12-inch. So there's a piece there that would need to be replaced. There's some pieces further south on Main Street that are also smaller main that would be, need to be replaced as well. So in terms of the cost comparison here, so we wanted to show you just where we are both ends. Consulting expenses, MWRA, 1.65 million versus 325,000. That was approved last October for the Andover. Obviously, the construction of the Reading or Andover, the construction in other towns, in this case, Andover's responsible for any infrastructure improvements in Andover required by this. We were required to do 4.67 million dollars' worth of improvements in the town of Reading if we went to the MWRA. As we've said, Andover's water's at a higher pressure than us. We open the valve, it flows in, we don't have to pump the water from Andover. So there's no need for pumping station, pumping station construction, about 2.55 million to go to the MWRA. And that includes, we are including, not the addition of chlorine, but chloramines in that system to further provide disinfection into North Reading. The only difference being that the MWRA system is a system that adds what's called chloramines, which is a mixture of chlorine and ammonia versus the Andover system. In North Reading's current system, we both add straight chlorine to the system. So we're showing the cost of the booster chlorination stations that Rob talked about at about 1.15 million. The improvements needed to North Reading's was a million dollars. To our piping, if we went to MWRA, we're estimating it's about 2.5 million if we go with the Andover. That includes those improvements shown on the prior slide. Reimbursement for money spent to MWRA is if we go to Andover, Andover did agree in that vote they took a couple weeks ago to reimburse us over 10 years at $953,000. So the totals, construction-type costs going to MWRA is about 9.87 million dollars. Going to Andover's about just over $3 million. We factor in the mass work grants of $3 million that we got either way, and then add in the buy-in cost for the MWRA, which does not exist on the Andover side. Net cost to go to Andover is about 14.55 million. Net cost to go to Andover is $22,000. And what's not shown in here is obviously, we bought the property on Mill Street for $700,000 a year or so ago. At some point, we could decide to dispose of that if we go the Andover route, too. So there's another slight pool of money there. In terms of operating costs, we have the two options again, so the pumping station plus chlorine or the chlorine distribution. We don't have exact annual operating costs. They'll be very similar costs either way we go, so that's kind of a wash in either system. What are we going to save by going either way? We're not going to have to maintain our wells anymore. That includes the physical work we have to do just to keep the wells running every year, the chemical costs, the electrical costs, the, you know, the pumping costs, and some of the testing costs would go away. So we're estimating just over $200,000 we'd save on that end annually. And then we're estimating that we would require fewer people. We're still going to have a water department for the meter reading, for the maintenance of the distribution system, but we'll lose about $187,000 in labor cost as well.
Before you go, can you go back to that next slide? So the water coming from Andover, is it really, is it hard water?
It's not, it's neither hard nor soft is the way it's defined. It's called, if you looked at it technically, it'd be called moderately hard, but it's not, it's not what would be classified as hard water.
Is there a capital improvement that we would want to consider to make it a little softer for improving for quality?
Based on the levels of the hardness, it's not something that would be recommended. We don't need to soften the water. It's not something that's aggressive. It's not something that's, you go out to the Midwest or even out in the West, and there's some very, what they call very hard waters. That's not typically the case in New England, and it's not the case.
I only brought it because that maybe some issues with some of our town buildings with some of the pipes, I thought maybe some of it was related to hard water. What is hard water versus?
So hard water is generally water that's hard. It has higher levels of calcium and manganese in it, and they tend to, what you'll see even in the, out in the West is they'll actually deposit some of that material inside the pipe. Hard water makes it, it makes it hard for soap to work up a lather. It tends to be, you look at your washing machines or your dishwashers, typically, if they're above a certain hardness level, they recommend that you do something to the water. You can have in-house treatment systems that take some of that calcium.
Has a negative effect on your appliances.
Things out of the water, yeah. But it's generally not a problem here in the Northeast?
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
So here's, we've seen this graph before. Cost of water operations, we're projecting it out over about the next 40 years. And again, the red line is the MWRA, the blue line is North Red, is going with Andover. Again, what's the big driver and the difference between the two lines as you go out is what is the escalating cost of the cost of water? For this, we've projected MWRA at the 4% that it has historically been and the 4% that they projected to be. And Andover, even though our Andover increases have been much less than this, they've averaged about 1.2% over the years. Andover's made statements that, you know, they're looking at 2.5% being more the norm going forward. So what tends to happen in that is the further out you go, 4% compounded annually versus 2.5%, the line's split fairly quickly. And, you know, by the end of it, you're up at, sorry. You know, here, you're up around $14 million a year versus about $9.5 million a year. So that, even though they're very similar in the early years of this, as you get out in the graph, they split, and there's millions of dollars difference in a typical year. Again, it's assuming that there's a constant rate of growth over all that time. So this we presented back in September and October, pros and cons for either, just want to go through them real quickly. MWRA, one of the big pros is it's what we've always said, it's a permanent solution. That was the driving thing. That's why we asked Andover to go back to their town meeting and take that second vote. We've become actual seats on the MWRA board, so we have a vote about water rates if we go to the MWRA. The community is always already well-informed of this. They've already supported this. We had votes going back to last June for those construction monies that the town supported. We have a design that's well underway. As we said, we purchased the Mill Street property, and then we've appropriated money for construction. Pros on the Andover side are there are two existing interconnections between Andover and North Reading. There are two connections we use pretty much on a daily basis. There's no pumping costs required. The Andover system's at a higher pressure than us, so all we need to do is open the valves further, and more water comes into North Reading. The term sheet we worked out with Andover was any improvements needed on the Andover side will be funded by Andover. There's no buy-in cost. We avoid the MWRA buy-in cost. There's no wheeling cost through the town of Reading. Again, the lower historic water rate increases, and it also supports connection to the Lawrence Sanitary District, Greater Lawrence.
Go back on that last one. So when you say they're going to be funded by Andover, it's not 100% true because the way it was presented at their town meeting was we would pick up 1/3 of those costs through our rate, right?
So currently, that is correct, yes. So currently, we support about 1/3 of their water rates. Their water rates support their capital, just like our water rates support our capital. So technically, unless they voted to do some other funding source, if they fund their improvements through their water rates, technically, we likely will be paying that percentage.
Yeah, I just think it's probably just better to present it that way than say Andover's picking it up. I think we just say they're going to use their traditional method of, you know, they're going to pick it up, their residents are paying 2/3 of it, we're going to be paying 1/3 of it through the rate.
Yeah, that's a good and valid point.
Michael, there was a rough number of about 20% of what we pay is for them to produce and get the water to us, and the rest is supplementing their water rate.
Yep. Mr. Schultz.
Mark, so a question, because that part does trouble me a little bit, where I'm not sure if the 2.5% is a real number. If they decide 20 years into this, they want to do a major overhaul, we have no say at the table, correct?
Correct.
So they just do it and then pass it on to their, into their billing?
Yes, but the controlling factor is the fact that that impacts their water rate.
Right. But so, but they could do a big infrastructure improvement, knowing, hey, North Reading's paying for 1/3 of this, we're going to do the Taj Mahal, we're going to do this one. And there's nothing we can do about that.
No, but they, that water rate increase hits all of their citizens, so.
Yeah. Right, but they know they're only paying 2/3 for everything to do for their citizens. I don't know. It's a red flag to me.
Just keep in mind, too, that the rate structure that we have agreed upon already is that we would be 95% of their lowest-tier rate payer.
Right.
You know, so yes, we will be paying for, you know, 30% of the infrastructure costs as we would be, as we have now or more at this particular juncture. But by the same token, you know, they have to answer to their residents and their water rate payers, and generally speaking, they've been pretty stingy up there, complain very loudly.
Except their former selectmen who wanted higher rates.
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Minipelli, I will get to you in a second, but I just want to say that I think it's a, it's actually a positive. I think it's a deterrent from them to actually take on a significant capital cost all in one year or maybe in two years, where I believe, which they presented at their own town meeting, they have a plan for their capital, which is a pretty steady investment rather than a huge load up. I mean, it has to be a catastrophic issue, I think. And I don't think they want to handcuff their rate payers locally. I just can't imagine. I think it's a low-risk situation, but you're not wrong in what you're saying, but.
Well, it's just the lack of a seat at the table is troubling, but there's no way around that, yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Minipelli.
I just, I just wanted to go over a couple of slides back, the water supply fixed cost comparison, and just ask you a few questions on it. Because you presented to the, to the capital improvements, the five-year project summary on these, and I'm just, I'm just trying to coordinate the comparison between the two. So in terms of the Reading, so in terms of the overall project costs for either/or, I think you did three projections for us. One was status quo, one was the total capital costs to fully connect to Andover, and then the, the third was the total capital cost to fully connect with MWRA over that period. And on what's in this five-year plan, it's saying that the project cost required to totally transition to MWRA is, it's a total of 21,723,000. And the total cost to transition 100% to Andover, the project costs are $17,405,000. So there's not too much of a difference when you projected it over five years as to what we needed to, what we needed to pay for either/or. So I'm just trying to figure out, so for example, in this cost comparison, you're negating the booster chlorine station. It looks like a negative, but it's included.
No, it's not a, that's a, I was meant to say it's an approximate number.
Oh, it's precise on this five-year summary.
She's looking at the capital, okay.
Yeah, because I, I think a lot of the numbers that you've incorporated into this graph are precise on this summary. You know, for example, the $4,670,000 infrastructure, but it's missing what it would cost for the infrastructure improvements if we're to tie in totally to Andover, so.
I'd have to, I, I don't see what you're looking at, so I'd have to just see, I don't know if you want me to come take that and I should talk to you.
Yeah, sure. I just kind of, it's got a lot of my scratch, scratch marks on it, but for an example, saying North Reading water system improvements, if you take a look at these two, you see these three, they're missing from this, and you're using the definitive figures on that, which I'm assuming, assuming weren't definitive for Andover, but they are definitive.
Mrs. Minipelli, is that from the capital?
Yes, and he did an, he did an excellent five-year projection as to what it would cost to go all in on Andover, to go all in on MWRA and to stay status quo. And that's what I've been, in terms of informing my decision regarding the decision, that's what I keep referring back to in terms of, there's still some significant other costs associated with going to MWRA, but in just looking at that, I don't see much of a difference in terms of the capital improvements. And of course, we have that $3,000, $3 million mass works grant to offset it. So it sort of evens it out in terms of what we're going to have to do either/or, at least for capital or infrastructure improvement.
So what is shown on here, and I guess I'm, I'm missing a piece of what you're saying, but the. I don't know what I do.
That means it's time to go home?
That's it, yeah. Lights out, yeah.
Magic, thank you. So what's shown on here in 2019, what we're showing are the.
Okay, all right. You're only looking at the one year, not the projected five-year costs.
Well, for the, for the construction costs relative to Andover, they're all shown here in FY19. Those are already previously approved or appropriated monies. The cost to Andover is basically, it's the sum of these three years at the very bottom.
But we haven't utilized that, so we're still going to be, because it's appropriated, we're still going to be, that's still a cost factor to us.
So if we do not go to the MWR, I have a problem with this. If we do not go to the MWRA, then this number goes away, this number goes away, and this number goes, we don't spend them, even though they've been appropriated.
That's what I was trying to get at. So you're negating it because of what was already appropriated for the MWRA project?
We're, so at the very bottom, the net cost of this is, when we add up all this column, subtract out the mass works grant, that's where that 14.55 million comes from. So if we go to MWRA, that's what we're on the hook for. If we go to Andover, it's the, it's the right-hand column, which when you subtract out the reimbursement from Andover, and you subtract out the mass works grant, it becomes $22,000.
I think, though, that one thing is that if you went with Andover, the consulting cost under MWRA, some of that will be spent, if not all of it. cost under MWRA, some of that will be spent, if not all of it, because it's all related to the overall DEIR and all of the work that had to be done to pull this all together to get to a final FPIR.
Any other questions?
Uh, just a reminder, if you're gonna be using the pointer towards the, uh, presentation, if you please verbalize as best you can what you're pointing at, because it won't show up on the video. Thank you.
Okay. Should we use a different color pointer?
No, 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 it's, it's directly, uh, the key is that we're going to the, to the panel.
Affirmative. Gotcha. Please continue, if you have more questions, we can come back to it.
So those were the pros going either way, just very quickly, the cons. Uh, MWRA has higher level of permitting required to go to the MWRA. Uh, we have that Ipswich River crossing at Mill Street that we're looking at that sound, is fairly complicated. Um, obviously, we had the improvements, the Reading water system, the cost for those would be borne by the town of North Reading. Um, the reason for that is MWRA is not bringing the supply directly to North Reading. MWRA feed is to the south side of Reading, then we're relying on the Reading water distribution infrastructure to come to or bring the water to North Reading. Uh, there's the wheeling charge we would have to pay to Reading based on the fact that we're drawing more water through their system. It's gonna place, uh, some level of stress on their system. They may have to replace pipes quicker, so they're gonna be looking to, uh, you know, institute a future cash to be able to pay for any improvements they need. Um, it would be a single connection at Mill Street. Again, we'd need to pump the water. We'll have to add the chloramines at the station. Uh, there's that buy-in cost. There's the special legislation, uh, for that conservation land on Mill Street that we're looking to cross. Uh, the cons on the Andover side is, again, we mentioned this, we will not be a member of Andover's Water Commission. That's the not having a seat at the table. It's a, it's as permanent as we can make it, but it's a ninety-nine-year agreement. Um, similar to the chloramines to the MWRA system, we'd have to add chlorine at the entry points to our system. And then there's the special legislation we've been going through for the ninety-nine-year agreement. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Stein. He's gonna go through, uh, what they found on the wastewater side.
Thank you. Hi, as Mark said, I'm Mike Stein. I'm a project manager with Wright Pierce.
Excuse me. Yo.
Yes. And so, uh, without having a seat at the table, would you have a liaison to be able to attend, uh, those meetings at Andover?
Mr. Clark, I'm Mr. O'Leary.
During our discussions and negotiations with the town of Andover, they were not opposed to the idea of forming an advisory committee similar to like RMLD does have, and, um, that'll be part of our discussion with the final negotiations with Andover if we move forward. So they, they were actually struck by the idea, thought it was a good idea to have at least annual dialogue, you know, semi-annual or annual dialogue, uh, with representatives of North Reading, but maybe from their business community and other big users, so. But that was not part of the, uh, foundation agreement that we had put together with them. But there was discussion there and they were amenable to it.
Mr. Massey.
The, the Andover Water Commission is actually their board of selectmen, and they meet in a formal meeting as water commissioners. Whether they do that as part of their regular board meeting or not, I don't know, but it is a public session.
Thank you.
It, it, just as a matter of, uh, point that we also made to some of the residents up there during the public informational meetings, uh, North Reading was not looking for a seat on the commission, you know, to vote on, on water rates. We were looking to be treated just as any other, uh, customer of Andover was going to be treated. We didn't wanna be treated any differently. You know, how they, um, set their rates, you know, how they, uh, determine what capital improvement's gonna be made is entirely up to them. It's their water system, we're a customer. We wanna be treated the same way. We weren't looking for anything like any other customer up there. We weren't looking, we weren't looking for a seat at the table. But we were looking for meeting with them on a regular basis through an advisory-type committee.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Okay. Thank you. As I said, uh, my name is Mike Stein. Stein, I'm a project manager with Wright Pierce. I'm here to talk about wastewater and the evaluation that we've performed, but before I begin, I just wanna talk about the components of a wastewater system. There, there's four components to a wastewater system. The user, the collection system, the treatment system, and then lastly, disposal. Okay, I think we can all agree in North Reading that we have users, the households and businesses that create or, or generate the wastewater. I think we can all agree that we can put in a collection system in town, pipes, manholes. We can treat that wastewater, but where North Reading is very limited, they're very limited in disposal. Keep in mind, there's two different types of, of disposal. There is surface water and land disposal. Surface water is exactly what, what it says, disposing your effluent, your treated effluent to a lake, to a river, to a stream. And then land disposal is you, instead of taking it to a river, lake, or stream, that you put it into the ground such as some sort of surface, subsurface disposal, beach field type method. So with, with disposal in, in North Reading, in order to have a surface water discharge is pretty much prohibited in, in this community, uh, for various reasons, just for, um, the lack of, of, uh, of a surface water that'll provide enough dilution and also, yeah, impaired water, waterways as well. So this, probably several years ago, the town decided to do a study to try to find, um, land disposal areas, suitable land disposal areas within the town. And one was located, a favorable site was located, but it was certainly limited. It would not accommodate all the required flow that was gonna be generated. And that was, that site was the JT Berry Site. And, uh, since then, the, the town has sold that site, which, um, creates, which, that, that opportunity no, no longer exists, which further limits disposal opportunities with, within the town of North Reading. So with those limits, started to look at, at the other options. One is taking flow to the MWRA. Uh, and that would be through, through the town of Reading in the Woburn where the MWA interceptor is located. Uh, for that, we're talking point-one MGD or basically a hundred thousand gallons. That's the most that MWRA would be willing to, um, entertain and accepting flow. And second is flow to GLSD, Greater Lawrence Sanitary District, which is located in, uh, North Andover. In order to get there, the flow would go through Andover and then in, into Lawrence, and we're talking point-five MGD or, or five-hundred thousand gallons. So by going to the MWRA or going to GLSD, um, remember I talked about the four components of a wastewater system. So by going to MWRA or GLSD, that's where the treatment and the disposal will take place. So the only thing in North Reading would be the users, businesses and households that generate the wastewater, and then the collection system or the conveyance system to get it to, to, to the treatment site. And then, um, I'll, I'll talk about some of the findings that, um, about sending wastewater through Reading and Woburn and also through Andover and Lawrence, and I'll talk about costs. Wrong direction. Okay, th- this is a map of the North Reading sewer. This is taken out of the draft environmental impact report. Uh, this has the, the top four priority areas. It has, uh, Route twenty-eight from the Andover Town Line going down to the Park Street intersection. It has Martins Pond, it has Lowell Road, it has Park Street, and also Concord Street. All this flow here accounts for five-hundred thousand gallons, which would be, ended up being pumped up into Andover and then flowing through Lawrence to GLSD. So this is a map of, of Reading going into Woburn. This, this is the route that the wastewater flow, the, the flow path would take, um, coming from Concord Street going to MWRA. So it would be pumped to a collection, to the existing collection system on Grove Street in, in Reading, and from there, you can see through the colors how, how it, it just snakes through town, ends up crossing the, uh, Reading-Woburn Town Line to connect up to the MWRA interceptor. This map here shows the flow path to the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. From, from the left-hand side of, of the screen, you can see the force main from, from North Reading. Uh, we have that going into Andover quite a bit, just to bypass some existing pump stations so we don't have to up, upgrade those to connect up into their interceptor. And you can see how that, um, more or less snakes through the, the middle of Andover, going towards, uh, the, uh, the right-hand side of, of the screen over to the Lawrence Town Line where it goes into a pump station, the Shawshing Pump Station where it gets pumped up to the interceptor in Lawrence and flows gravity to the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District. So here are some preliminary planning-level costs. The, uh, the top table i- is Concord Street. The, the hundred thousand gallons a day going to MWRA. We're given cost ranges. Infrastructure within North Reading, this would be along Concord Street corridor, is from seven million to eleven million. Infrastructure upgrades within Reading and Woburn in order to handle the increased flow from Concord Street ranges from eleven million to sixteen million for a total cost between eighteen and twenty-seven million. The table below talks about the, uh, the flow going to Greater Lawrence Sanitary District, the five-hundred thousand gallons. The infrastructure within North Reading will be ninety-two million to a hundred thirty-nine million, and that's, that's the, uh, infrastructure that I showed you on, on the map three slides Did this map here for, for those four, four priority areas. And then the infrastructure upgrade within Andover is, is twenty-five to thirty-eight million. Again, that's just to improve the, the, uh, the capacity in order to handle the flow from North Reading, and that, that total cost ranges from one-seventeen to a hundred seventy-seven million. So let's talk about the, uh, the wastewater pros and cons. We'll start out with, with the pros. Going to the M, MWRA, the hundred thousand gallons to the MWRA or the five-hundred thousand gallons to, to, uh, GLSD through Andover. So if we went to the MWRA, that would certainly solve the Concord Street, putting sewers in, in, in the Concord Street. Going to GLSD through, through Andover, you would meet the North Reading's economic needs and, and identified public health needs. Uh, for example, public health needs would be around the Martins Pond area. It would also allow North Reading to phase in the sewer. For example, um, with the way that sewer is laid out with those priority areas, the first phase would easily be the Route twenty-eight corridor, and then from there, you, you can branch off on different phases and do Martins Pond or, or Lowell Road or, uh, Park Street, Concord Street. And the good news is that Greater Lawrence Sanitary District does have excess capacity in order to, um, take the additional flow that North Reading would be sending. So let's look at, at the cons between going to MWRA and to Greater Lawrence Sanitary District through Andover. With MWRA, it requires investment and upgrades outside of town, but also, that's the same for going through Andover, okay? That will require investment upgrades outside of North Reading too. MWRA will require a four-to-one inflow reduction. For every gallon of wastewater that, that we send to MWRA, we have to take four gallons of inflow out. So if we send, if we sent a hundred thousand gallons to NWRA, we have to take four-hundred thousand of gallons of inflow out in some neighboring community. And the same way in Andover. The, the difference between MWRA and Andover is that in Andover, instead of being, um, four-hundred thousand gallons of inflow reduction, because we're sending five-hundred thousand gallons through Andover, it'd be four times five-hundred thousand. So it'd be two million gallons of inflow we'd have to take out of, of a neighboring community. The MWRA would only serve Concord Street. It cannot be expanded. Uh, MWRA will not entertain, um, any more than, than a hundred thousand gallons. Also with MWRA, it does not address any public health or additional economic development needs in North Reading. It'll certainly take care of, of economic development with, within the Concord Street corridor, that's for sure. Um, it would require substantial additional permitting to solve other wastewater needs. Uh, the MWRA will require three days of storage, which just will result in additional cost. So if we send a hundred thousand gallons a day to, um, MWRA, we're gonna need three-hundred thousand gallons of, of storage. And lastly, with MWRA, if, if North Reading doesn't buy water from MWRA, MWRA is not gonna take any wastewater from the town of North Reading. And lastly, in Andover, um, similar, if North Reading doesn't buy water from Andover, um, likely they might not take the sewer as well. And... Okay.
Steve.
Sure.
I'll go through the rest, Mike. Okay, so we've gone through this before, and I'll go kinda quickly. The summary of the proposed Andover agreement, uh, this is a document that they voted and signed off in September, and there haven't been any changes. Primarily, it was up to two-point-six million gallons a day. Option after six years to get to three million gallons. Capital expenses, Andover will be responsible for them on their side. Water rate, ninety-five percent of their tier-one rate, not to exceed two-point-five percent for a term of ten years. North Reading to be reimbursed for costs already incurred up to the nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand dollars that we saw previously, beginning in July one of two thousand and eighteen, paid over ten years. Term, ninety-nine years pending town meeting and legislative approval. Town meeting has been approved and, uh, we've already, we've submitted to the legislature correctly?
Yep.
And have they that? I was a question I didn't have an answer to.
So we have submitted our legis-, our, uh, three pieces of legislation, um, two for Reading and one for Andover to Representative Jones. I don't know that they've been admitted formally for legislative consideration. I spoke with the town manager, indicated that they would be, um, looking to do so shortly, but we're looking to see what, what, what the outcome of our discussions were this evening prior to submitting.
Continuing on, uh, work with North Reading to extend fees, uh, extend, to the extent feasible, to be an emergency backup supply to the town of Reading with the North Reading water infrastructure. This would benefit every... This would benefit everybody, us being in the middle. Service quality and quantity, Andover responsible for meeting state and federal requirements, water ban supplies to be shared equally. Permitting...
Michael, that's a point. Michael, go ahead.
No, I'm trying to. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm trying to. Am I on the right side?
You're on it. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Permitting slash approvals, each town responsible for their own. Andover to supply engineering and administrative support to obtain permits, to assist, to obtain the necessary permitting on their side. And that is to increase their current permit to get to, to be able to supply us the 3 million gallons a day. Interim agreement extended, rate of 5% for FY 2019. This is the current agreement we're operating on. And then 0% for FY 2020. And then beyond that, it would be 2.5% for FY 2021. And that was the extension that we discussed as part of this agreement. And a long-term agreement is reached, rate goes to 95% of the Andover tier one rate. At the beginning of the fiscal year, the agreement is signed. So if a long-term agreement, this is important, is reached, rate goes to 95% of Andover's tier one rate at the beginning of the fiscal year of the agreement, that the fiscal year the agreement is signed. So if we were to get a signed agreement on June 29th or 30th, we would get credit for a reduced rate for that whole fiscal year. A long-term agreement is reached, the rate goes to 95% of Andover's tier one rate at the beginning of the fiscal year, agreement is signed. I said it three times now. And then sewer collaboration. And now we get to the next steps. Going down the path of Andover, signed legal 99-year water agreement. Legislature 99-year approval of the inter-basin transfer permit. Town meeting article approvals, and those would be those related to the capital for Andover. And it would be less than the capital that's already been approved for the MWRA. Meet a notice of project change. Final environmental impact report, which is the FEIR. And design and construct chlorine control for interconnections, already been discussed. The MWRA, the inter-basin transfer permit, very similar to getting water from Andover. Complete and file the FEIR. Redding Historic and Conservation Committee approval of the Mill Street Bridge crossing, and legislative approval for the same. And that's related to crossing the conservation land. Legislative approval for the same, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself again. Wheeling agreement would have to be worked out in terms of what we were paying Andover for passing the water through their...
Redding.
Redding, passing their water through their water system. And design and construct pumping facility and Redding distribution system improvements. And those have been approved by town meeting. The construction hasn't started, but the money is there. And we've already, as discussed earlier, we've already acquired the land. So I'll let Mr. O'Leary make the recommendations.
Okay, so the recommendation that we're making to the board this evening is, we're looking for authorization to continue negotiations for a long-term agreement with Andover. Work toward finalizing the long-term agreement by Andover by May 31st. Again, the thought behind this is, you know, if we're gonna make a decision and go this path, we need it done, done quickly, and get to some finalization, so that we can have time before our town meeting to have the appropriate articles available to move forward. When we put off the construction down in Redding, you know, we knew that we were gonna lose construction season and potentially increase our costs if we were gonna go with MWRA. So we're looking to have a final decision by this board to go with the Andover or the MWRA by our June 4th town meeting. So what we'd like to do is get authorization to continue with the negotiations for a long-term agreement, to see if we can hammer out something that would be amenable to both boards in very short order, so that by the time we get to our town meeting, again, we already have spaces available in the warrant to address the issues, we'll know which direction we're gonna be taking.
Michael, may I make one additional comment?
Yes, go ahead.
With respect to a long-term agreement, we've already come to an agreement on what should be in it. I think most of this is legal, in terms of putting a legal document together. We're not anticipating making any changes. And I don't think Andover is either at this point.
We agree on the parameters.
Yeah, we agree on the parameters. And again, there may be some minutia and fine details. Again, we were awaiting the report from Wright Pierce in relation to any capital improvements that may need to be made in order to meet what our demands would be, and whether or not there were any impediments in theirs. It doesn't appear as though there's anything that's of any consequence that they would have to. So that is one issue that's off the table. I mean, for Andover, I know that they had discussion and made some commitments in relation to a minimum amount of water that they would want us to purchase. Again, that's still open for discussion, you know, since we had stated before to them, MWRA has no minimum requirements. And, you know, they'll sign an agreement with you, whether you buy water from them now or not. But again, that's open for discussion. Other than that, I can't think of any other significant issues outside the parameters that we've already agreed to, other than legal lease and putting the pen to the paper. So we'd like to get this thing hammered out and finalized in short order, so that we can make a final decision, final, final decision by our June town meeting. Again, if we can't come to an agreement with Andover in the next month, I don't understand what would impede that. So let's find out now, if there is.
We may have had one slide out of order here. The Andover water action items would be, approve the formal 99-year agreement with Andover, both sides by May 31st, 2018.
Which is what gets to having this agreement done.
Right. Legislative approval of the 99-year agreement, obviously, we've gotta move forward with that. Approve all of articles related to Andover on June 4th, 2018 town meeting, if we're going in that direction. File in the FEIR as it relates to going with Andover, if we make that decision. And submit a request for inter-basin transfer permit for 3 million gallons per day. The estimated approval time is nine months.
Mrs. Minipelli, you...
No, I think, I mean, maybe that answered the question. I think this might have answered it, because we don't, I was thinking, in tandem with this, are we going to seek the, you know, legislative approval of the home rules? But why, it's sort of two different directions, so we would have to decide, so they could move forward on the ones. But it doesn't seem like there's any issue there, or there would be any issue there to approval of a long-term 99-year agreement.
Between us and Andover?
No, at the legislature.
The legislature, no, I don't think, no, both communities are in favor of doing it. Doesn't appear as though there'd be a hurdle.
And it doesn't seem like there'd be any holdup or issue if we move forward with the MWRA to that, getting approved either. So they're just, is it that they're just waiting to, for us to decide the path before they submit one or the other?
Mr. Gobert.
So, a couple of things I would say, just based on where I think we stand. I'm not sure that we wholeheartedly agree with the strategy of holding off on Andover's part. The big difference, I think, is that Andover has got the, has received the approval of their town meeting, whereas Redding has not yet received it, nor has it sought it, and would not be able to do so until November, I believe. So from a timing standpoint, that is a difference. I don't know that needs to dictate what the outcome is, but it's just something we need to be aware of, that's all.
And again, Redding, you know, has been very upfront with us, basically saying, you know, make a decision which way you wanna go. We're more than happy to help you, we're more than happy to work with you and assist you in getting all the required permits and all the rest, but you have to make a decision one way or the other before they go and seek any approval from their town meeting and/or request of us or allow us to go before their historical district, historical commission, or their conservation commission. So they're holding off until we make a decision on MWRA or Andover. That, therefore, protracts the timeline. And that's why it's important for us to have Andover, see if we can come to a final determination, if that's the wishes of the board, to finalize an agreement, so we know what we're getting into, and have it done by our June town meeting.
Did we not make a commitment to Redding and MWRA that we would do this before April 30th?
No, that wasn't, no. We determined that date for ourselves to come to some sort of a conclusion. We didn't make a commitment. As far as I'm concerned, you know, I'll state it again, the MWRA and the town of Redding have been terrific as far as, you know, working with us and offering us an opportunity to tie into them. Again, they were, up until a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, less than a year and a half ago, they were our only option. And they were very forthright, straightforward, and as we assured Mr. Lasky and the advisory board, you know, we weren't looking for them to negotiate against themselves, or against the town of Andover, or alter any terms and conditions which they had already offered us. We thought they were very fair. And I believe that position still stands, you know, and they reluctantly understood, and they might be a little bit disappointed with us, but they also understood that we had a fiduciary responsibility to take a look at this option. So...
I have another question on that. And now I understand, all the times when we've talked about sewer, why you mentioned the cost prohibitiveness, based on the slide that you showed. But is, in terms of the negotiation, I have extracted that, I've extracted the consideration of sewer as a part of this, in terms of either-or, you know, with that not being a real possibility here. It looks as though there has been some consideration, at least by the expert, but what in terms of the negotiations has led anyone to believe that that's gonna happen with Andover? Because it looks like that graph that was produced seems to suggest that there's a foot in the door for that to happen.
There is a foot in the door, and that was part of the carrot that they held out to us, was that, you know, if you buy water from us, we'll work with you to assist you in joining the Greater Lawrence Sewer. They have a seat at that table. They have a representative, voting representative, and they would be advocating for our joining. The important, one of the other important pieces of information that's important to note is that the line that goes from Andover through Lawrence, Andover actually owns the line that goes through Lawrence. So there wouldn't be have to be an additional permitting through Lawrence.
So in terms of that, would, just like we have to pay a wheeling fee for Redding, would we be doing something of that nature through Andover?
For sewage, yes. For wastewater, there would be a wheeling charge. There would be an upgrade, you know, to their pumping station to intercept and order to set it up to the treatment plant. Yeah, there would be a wheeling charge. Again, it's not a moneymaker for Andover at all, by all means. It was not a consideration, for them, it doesn't make any difference. There's no benefit to the town of Andover by allowing us to go through there, even with a small wheeling charge, to allow us to go through. They knew that we were looking for an opportunity to meet our wastewater needs here in North Redding from both an economic development and public health standpoint. They were aware of our discussions over the last several years, and they would be willing to partner with us and assist us in getting us to tie in, and be supportive of getting us to sign the Greater Lawrence. Again, the opportunity for that, it allows us, over a long period of time, to phase it in. It doesn't have to be done all at once, obviously.
And we did, we did pay a visit to the Greater Lawrence Sewer District, and I think we left there with the understanding they're at about 50% of capacity, and they'd like to have some more customers to pay for their capital, just like Andover would like to have some more water.
They were very receptive, and again, I wasn't able to make the regional meeting, but the chairman went with Mr. Masari and the town administrator with the state, and they just said, make up your mind which way you wanna go.
Hold on. Mr. Schultz, please.
My question is actually for our water experts. I see tons of articles in the papers about every time there's a large storm, there's a ton of raw sewage that's dumped into the Meramec. I also see stories about all these syringes washing up on shore, you know, the papers are littered with these stories. I know the Quabon, obviously, has no industry on it, the Meramec does. What about the water quality? That's a real concern of mine, is the amount of raw sewage that gets dumped in there on storm overflows. Will your, I mean, where does, well, first of all, where does Lawrence discharge, into the Meramec?
Into the Meramec, but they're south of where the withdrawal, Andover's withdrawal is.
Where does Lowell discharge?
Above.
And we're drinking Lowell's discharge.
We have been for years.
Yeah. Let's just think about that when we look at price.
Yeah, let me add to that. We talked to North, we talked to Andover about this, and what their procedures and processes are. They're in communication with every community upstream that has, CSOs are called, come as sewer overflows. They do not happen very often. They are notified when they happen, and they shut down their, their intake when they do happen. The good thing about a river system is you get almost instantaneous dilution, and it flows by, you know, any waste is dumped, it flows by fairly quickly.
Is there any chance of that happening in the Quabon, on the lines where it comes in? Nothing gets discharged into that water source?
No, no, because they have the water ship protected.
They have to be discharged into the Quabon.
Yeah, that's a, and that's a real concern of mine, I think that we're overlooking. I think for years in North Redding, we've just picked the cheapest option for everything. And MWRA costs more. The other thing that scares me is sewer collaboration. I don't know what that means with Andover. I mean, we saw what it's like for the last five, seven years negotiating with Andover to even get to the point we're at today. I mean, they haven't been the most cooperative. I mean, the current board is great, but boards change every year. The last board was a lot different than the new board. The next board may be different. I don't see how, once they get us locked in with a 99-year agreement, they have any incentive to cooperate with us on sewage. So to me, that could be a red herring that we're looking at. I just, I don't know, I don't wanna waste everybody's time pushing towards Andover. I just think MWRA is a more modern source, a cleaner source, it's better quality drinking water for our citizens. And I think, you know, mark my words, we won't be here, so I can say this, I can predict it, but in the year 2117, people are gonna look back and say, oh, for 14 million, they could have owned MWRA, now we gotta try to re-up with Andover. And it's not permanent. I mean, it's long-term, but it's not permanent. We can't just always take the cheapest option now, that's not always the best option. Just my thoughts on it.
Mr. Yofe, you want a mic?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm surprised, I didn't expect to have this many questions, and I apologize for that. But if we are not able to negotiate a final agreement with Andover, come to any type of resolution going forward, and we decide to go the MWRA route, with Redding not having town approval, and not doing so until November, would we not be vulnerable to the same issues that we had with Andover in their first meeting, and eventually we were able to work it out? But wouldn't we be vulnerable to a very bad situation, having no water intake available to us?
Mr. O'Leary.
I see the issue is very different. And again, as far as Redding's approval, you know, part of it is for home rule petitions, the other is for, first of all, for the inter-basin transfer, and the other is also for conservation land in the crossing of Ipsut River at Mill Street. Very different issues in relation to that. The rest of it is just, you know, Redding's gonna be getting a wheeling charge, we're gonna be paying for all infrastructure, no cost to the town of Redding at all for any of the construction. And again, be some disruption for traffic for a little while, but we're even paying for the details. So, no, very, very, very different.
Well, I know they're different, but wouldn't we be vulnerable if they said, if the town of Redding at the town meeting said, no, we don't wanna go into this...
Or they don't wanna go for the home rule petition to allow North Redding, I suppose.
Yeah.
I suppose. It's always a risk. But as far as why they would deny us that opportunity, who knows?
Yeah, I just thought that was, that's a scary scenario, if that were to happen, that's all.
Always a potential. Never underestimate what Tommy may or may not do.
Okay, so you made a recommendation, and are you looking, so you're looking for a vote tonight, or are you just looking for... a vote tonight, or are you just looking for sort of a...
Yeah, I think we're looking for, again, authorizations to continue negotiating with Andover to come to a, bring it to fruition by the end of May.
Well, yeah. Mr. Menipelli.
I'm not sure how we can do that without saying yes or no to one or the other.
Well, the goal is to say yes or no to one or the other by June town meeting.
Why couldn't we do that tonight? What's going to happen the next month that we don't already know?
Well, I think it's important that we get the firm commitment from Andover as far as what the, whatever minutia there is and whatever details need to be worked out now.
Yeah, let's get the devil's.
Because it just provides us a timeline to move forward.
We need to get the same thing from the other side, too, though. We can't just get a fan.
Well, I think this is why it's important to accept this recommendation or allow them to pull together the details, get it all locked down to the point where they come back here.
Unless the majority of the board is not in favor of going, or you're done considering this.
Right.
You know, then, please, you know, give us a little more time to ourselves.
No, that's where I am. I mean, I, I think MWRA is a cleaner water source, it's a more modern water source, and I don't think cost is everything. I think health and safety is paramount. I don't like the idea of drinking Lowell's waste. You know, and I realize it's treated, but I also realize there's syringes, there's outflows. I, I don't, that's just my opinion, but I'm 105. I don't know, available to your place.
Please.
And I, I mean, I, I have been, and I've been pretty vocally in favor of moving forward with the MWRA. We already have the town backing to do that, and everyone that I've spoken to is asking us why we're delaying on that. So more, more, more of the people that I've spoken to have that expectation that we're going to be moving forward and connecting there, and I think it's, it's a better decision for the town to be part of that larger consortium with a seat at the table. I also, like I just said, I extract the sewer part of it because I don't think it's a very real consideration for us. And, but it's, just seeing the, where it's progressed to, it's, it's tough for me, but I, but I also, I can understand where you're coming from, but I also think we've definitely told them that there's no, we shouldn't be imposed a minimum or maximum or a specific number of gallons we have to buy and things like that. So I think if, is that a real term that they're attempting to incorporate it in, or is that something that...
I would assume so, you know, based upon the conversation. But, you know, what that gallonage amount is, is open for, open for discussion.
So even, even though we said...
I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate the town in North Reading agreeing to any high gallonage amount.
I mean, it, it's obvious that if we go all in with Andover, we're going to have a certain...
There's no doubt. That was, that was the point we made. You know, I, I think what, what occurred was, you know, during the public information sessions, I saw some citizens happened to bring up, bring up the matter, and I think the initial reaction of some members of the board up there was, absolutely it's going to be part of the deal.
They felt we could have it.
Without discussing it with us, without, you know, and that's okay, I understand.
Some of them felt we could have from different sources, like, you know, it's either all this or all that.
Yeah, and again, we tried to impress upon the board members up there and the public that, you know, we're all in with whichever way we're going. But we don't really have that luxury or choice. We have to make a decision as to which way we're going to go.
Anything else?
If it was up to me and I were voting today, I would say, let's move on. We have the opportunity, we're ready to go, we, we've already gotten the town approval. Let's move on to MWRA. But I, again, I want to flag as well.
So we, you know, we really have the approval to do either one. We, we went to last town meeting, we got the approval to do either.
The other thing, the June town meeting, you know, when we got all the appropriations, the public, our public and we, this board, did not have all the information we have today in relation to presenting town meeting with an opportunity to choose either one. We did not. We went to town meeting with just MWRA last June.
That's all we had at the time.
That's all we had at the time, other than some preliminary discussions and negotiations with Andover. You know, so it would, we were not in a position to make an informed recommendation or have enough information for town meeting to make an informed decision as to which way would you like to go. The situation has certainly changed, you know, so while we have the appropriation and we have the support of town meeting to, to do it, you know, we have a lot more information right now. You know, and as far as, you know, discounting the ability to tie in to wastewater, you know, to me, this, this is a long-term approach that we need to discuss and have to decide how we're going to do. You know, how are we going to do it? We have limited our capacity, you know, as, as Mike had pointed out, to even have wastewater treatment facilities that we build ourselves and to treat ethyl, because we had no place to put it. We had no disposal sites, and the single largest disposal site we had, we sold. You know, so that for us to go it alone isn't really an option, other than small spotted areas. It isn't an option. MWRA has been unequivocal that, you know, you go with us, the water will give you Concord Street. There is no plan for expansion.
Well, Secretary has spoke to that. He said never is never.
There is nothing in their five to 20-year capital plans for future expansion of sewers anywhere in the Commonwealth. Period. That's, we sat at the table, we were told. But that being said, you know, to me, you know, the greater Lawrence sewer district is what our studies, which we paid lots of money, but told us that's the route we need to go anyway. And again, it's something that we can have the ability to phase in over time and help provide some economic development and meet the public health interest needs that we have over in the Martin's Park area. Otherwise, we've abandoned that. How do you do it?
They're just looking for a recommendation tonight, the authorization, I should say, to continue these negotiations, all right? To dot the i's and cross the t's, to see where we really are with all this.
To me, I don't, I don't anticipate that the deal is going to change much.
No, I don't, I don't either.
So, so if that's the case, you know, send us, send us forth to finish this thing off, then, you know, if we can get this thing done, that's probably the way we're going.
Yeah, I, well, this is what I'd like to say, you know, because I've been a fan of the MWRA approach. I really wanted to go that way because, one, they came to the table, we needed them most.
Yep.
I think the quality is there. I think it is a permanent, absolutely a permanent water source, quality water source forever. And, but it's expensive. It is. It's a, and Mr. Schultz, I, you know, you make a good point about what's $14 million over 99 years. It's actually not. When you see that graph tonight, and you see as we go out and it starts to expand, when you have historically, with Andover, it's been less than two and a half percent increases annually. And if you talk to the other surrounding communities that have MWRA, it's roughly been close to 4%. So it's factual information, and I think you've got to take into account that separation of the two lines in addition to the $14 million. I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to really, this is the path to go. As much as I love MWRA, and I would love to go that way, you can't say no to this because the water is good. I understand the concerns you may have with what's coming in from Lawrence, from Lowell in regards to sanitationary issues, but we're drinking that water today, and I think the man that gets paid to do the job has proven that we're chlorinating the water, we're testing the water.
We're drinking the water.
We're drinking the water.
60% of our water comes from there.
Now, this happened when I lived in Wakefield, so.
Can I, and I just want to address this, you know, the residents of Andover are not drinking water direct out of the Meramec River. I know we all understand that, but I don't want to leave that point. The water comes from the river, as Rob mentioned, in times when there are, like a week ago, we had that heavy, heavy rainstorm, and there were some combined sewer overflows into the Meramec River. They're notified, they stop their intake at that point, so that dirty water flows down the river, when it goes past them, they turn their intake back on. They pump from there into their pond. Their pond helps dilute the, the flows as well. Then they take that and they run it through a modern water treatment plant, and that treatment plant is capable of filtering out and cleaning that water to the point where, just as with MWRA, Andover has to meet federal drinking water standards for everything. They don't, they, they don't get a pass on, you know, the, the number of syringes in the water or anything. They have to meet those standards on every single contaminant that EPA regulates them for. So the water that comes from MWRA does meet, or from Andover and from MWRA, they're both very high-quality waters by the time they get to the, the customer. I wouldn't be standing here recommending, yeah, let's go to, let's go to Andover if I thought that was an inferior quality.
And remember, Mark, too, is they're chlorinating it there, and then you're chlorinating it again when it gets here. So we're taking clean water and we're chlorinating it one more time because it's going through our own pipes, and we want to make sure, I believe that's the, the other reason why we do it, right? It goes through their pipes, it could get some...
It diminishes, yeah.
Right, some diminishing.
Yeah, so the chlorine basically dissipates the further it gets out into the system. The problem for us is, we need a small chlorine residual on the very end of our system. You think the Thompson Country Club's about as far away from our sources and as far away from the Andover sources as you get. By the time the water gets to us, it's got a, from Andover has a very low chlorine residual. We need to still, we need to boost it to get a chlorine residual on the end of our system. We can't have the potential for any bacterial or microbial growth in our system. So that, that's really why both systems or all systems do some kind of disinfection.
So to wrap this up, you know, the board took this objective on. We had a set of goals that we wanted to achieve to meet this full objective. This meets the objective 100%. So does MWRA. But if, they, both of them equally meet the objective, what's the next thing you have to go to?
A contract.
Well, I think you got to start looking at what's in the best interest financially. They both equally meet the goal and the objectives that we have set.
They don't.
The next next thing comes down to the price.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the problem I have with it, too, is the most desirable spot we have to sewerage is Concord Street. If we go to Andover, that's the last thing that gets done. And looking at those numbers, I don't see where that ever gets done.
Oh, I do.
And the least desirable part of 28 gets done first would Andover, the northern end of town. I just think, well, so I don't think it's apples and apples, I think there are differences.
Listen, I would, I was a big proponent for Concord Street in getting it done. But when you look at those numbers and you look at this phased-in approach, for the first time ever, we truly have a path to sewer Concord Street and Route 28, and potentially branch off into areas that are in need down the road. So we can do it. We can actually do it. Yes, the cost, nobody likes it, but if we phase it, the betters are paying for it. We have an opportunity with some of this JT Berry money that we have to...
Just to clarify, the commercial betters.
The commercial betters.
Not the residential betters, we haven't discussed that yet.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, right.
But betters are betters, and the betters are paying for it. And, and I think you have a great opportunity here to achieve it more globally for North Reading rather than just one central location. And I'll leave you with this. Talking to, I asked Francis DeCoste, who you all know, who assisted us with the Lowell Road acquisition, and I asked him, just do me a favor, drive down Concord Street, drive down Route 28, and give me your professional opinion. Do we just go lock, stock and barrel for Concord Street and take, take the advantage of this, or, you know, and then look at Route 28? Is it even worth considering Route 28 at all for sewerage? When he went down, he said, Mike, my true professional opinion on this is that if you look at Concord Street, there's a significant amount of Concord Street that's already fully developed that is not going to change. So if you go and make this massive investment, let's just call it $27 million for Concord Street, you're only going to get about 30% of those people that take advantage of that values in changing their properties. But when you look at Route 28, it's so underdeveloped that you're going to get the biggest return on that investment doing Main Street versus just Concord Street. Because Concord Street has so many significant, fully-developed properties. I think that's pretty powerful.
It is. If you could look at the, the previous study that everybody's been quoting, it said that it was more bang for your buck, I think, than Route 28 than Concord Street.
In the FXM report...
The cost associated with your investment, the investment that you have to make, but overall, once it's in and once it's done, you know, the economic development that you get out of Concord, out of Route 28 is far greater than what you get out of Concord Street. But just to go back and echo a little bit what Michael was saying here, I first ran for the board in 1988, and out of my platform, sewerage on Concord Street. And, you know, one thing I learned is you just stay persistent, and he's absolutely right. This is truly the first opportunity that we have had to plan long range for sewerage for something other than Concord Street. And again, our needs are not just economic development, but it's public health needs too. And, you know, while we were looking at the path of, you know, building our own package treatment plants, and we were looking at the different sites, yeah, that was an option that we probably were going to have to go because Andover was out of the picture, they weren't even in the picture then. MWRA was maybe Concord Street, nothing more. You know, what else are we going to do? We're talking about rezoning with the planning commission, you know, what areas could we help the economic development? And how are we going to do that? And then we needed packaged treatment plants. Well, again, when we sold DePaulte, we gave up the largest area we had for wastewater disposal. So, you know, to me, it isn't always the cost. And again, if you're talking about cost, yeah, it's going to cost more to get sewerage, but we need sewerage.
We do.
We need it.
You know, by the way...
And, you know, and you say, if we're going to rely on, you know, somebody saying it a never is never with the MWRA, well, I'll tell you, since 1988, it's been never, and that was the first opportunity, 1990, 1991, when Terady was going in there, you know, that took a special act of the legislature and almost an act of God to get them to be allowed to tie in there. That was all because Reading's wells were right across the, the river. Other than that, there was nothing else. That permit goes with that property, and they own it. You know, we have to negotiate with them in order to get that excess capacity, which is all part of the sole permit process.
Is that the biggest tax, is that the biggest tax parcel we have in the town?
Yeah, no, not anymore.
Well, because it's a sewer, yeah. But you know, that goes to show...
Right, and when we negotiated with them, we've talked about the class, the tax classification, and we said, put your buildings in North Reading because Wilmington classifies, and they get most of the parking lots. You know, so that was involved in all those discussions way back when. But anyway, you know, to me, we have to look at the long-range benefits to the community as to what are our needs and how can we address them most appropriately. We need water. We now have two, two viable solutions, you know. We need sewerage. It needs to be addressed in some form of capacity, and we don't have the capacity to do it ourselves.
Right.
So...
Never will.
And again, it's not going to be done overnight, and I wouldn't even suggest we do it overnight because, again, the economics of it all, you know, doesn't make it feasible. But it does make it feasible to phase it in and get it going.
And the other thing, too, Steve, with this option here, with the greater Lawrence sewer district, is the grant opportunities would be far more available to us with that option than they will with the Concord Street. We probably won't get any grant assistance there, but I'm almost guaranteeing you, we're going to get some grant assistance if we go with that large one.
During all of our discussion, you know, again, the MWRA has been terrific. But again, they are facing, you know, substantial amount of infrastructure responsibilities as far as, you know, upgrading, meeting federal standards. They may be down the road, be subject to some things they're not subject to now. And yes, it's borne through all ratepayers. But again, Andover, that system up there faces far less issues in relation to maintaining the quality of their system and how to deliver water to us. So, you know, it's not just the 4%, yes, that's a big factor, it's a huge number, and it's something, again, all things being equal, need to consider. But the future costs of maintaining a system, even if it's shared by 50-some-on communities or whatever it is, it's huge, it's huge, and that 4% grows. And that's something we need to be cognizant of also.
Yep. And the other thing, too, is, you know, I was very happy to see that the Andover voters, how educated they became from that last town meeting to this, this recent one.
Huge.
They're very educated, and they fully grasp and understand the value of having North Reading as a customer. And I think that's a big difference that's making me a lot more comfortable about making my decision that I want to go with the Andover option over the MWRA option. Because that's not going to change now, and I think that's something that you should keep in mind as well. So I think we've, you know, we've gone late into the night here, and we still have more things than the, I would like to, if we have a motion or somebody wants to make a motion, things than the, I would like to, if we have a motion or somebody wants to make a motion, we'll take it at this point. Bob and Steve, you guys have something prepared?
I don't think we have anything right now.
I don't know if we have one written up.
We did not prepare a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the subcommittee to continue negotiations to perfect a long-term agreement with Andover. Such agreement to be forwarded to the, our board no later than May 31st.
Okay, I have a motion, and Jane is shaking her head, and I need a second.
Coming so fast.
Second by Mr. Misery. Jane, we'll catch that on the rewind, on the YouTube.
It's to authorize the subcommittee...
Negotiating.
The negotiating team, I'm sorry, to continue negotiations for a long-term, permanent agreement with Andover. Such agreement to be forwarded to this board for consideration by May 31st. Or something like that.
And the second was by Mr. Misery. Okay? So, any more discussion? I have a motion and a second, so discussion. None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Nope?
I'm not voting for it next month, but do you want to take an extra month and negotiate? Sure, yeah.
So, did you vote in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was unanimous. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I didn't vote no.
I heard four, I heard four yeses, I didn't hear five. It's unanimous. Thank you.
June Town Meeting, March. Approve it. Next.
So, I, Mr. Chairman, so I don't normally ask to do this, but I have a verbal town administrator's report I'd like to offer the board, part of which relates to the fire department's overtime budget, as I'm sure some of the board members have seen, the decreasing amount of available funds in the budget, and something we brought up back, and I think in March.
Can you address that now, so these gentlemen go home?
Yeah, I'd like to address it so that perhaps...
I'm sorry for making you wait.
The chiefs can go home.
You're getting paid by the hour, right? No. Do you want to come up to the microphone?
I'm actually going to ask the finance director to go through, because she has some of the information, and then, to the extent possible, you know, if there's any questions, we can prevent them, we can address them.
Yeah, go right ahead.
We're not asking for any vote of the board tonight, we're more just providing you an update that says, here's where we stand, we are monitoring it, we do have options. And I'll turn it over to the finance director.
Ms. Or.
Yes. So, I'm sure you've all noticed that you haven't been receiving weekly overtime reports sent out, and that's because we are in the process of updating the fire department's overtime spreadsheet. We are actually having it converted into an Excel document. It seems like it would be an easy process to do that, but it is not. So, we are working with an outside vendor to have that done. And, but in the meantime, we have been closely monitoring overtime, the fire chief, myself, and the public safety director. So, after a meeting in, I believe, the beginning of February, we briefed the board on, you know, where the fire overtime budget was going, you know, what we expected the revised fire department overtime budget to be, meaning hours and dollars, what was attributed to the contract settlement, and what was attributed to some unforeseen, unexpected issues. And I'll have the fire chief speak to the unforeseen items that have come up, and then I will come back and tell you some solutions on how we can handle that.
So, speaking of the unforeseen and unplanned-for issues that impacted our budget to the tune of just about $160,000, the first being, unfortunately, my promotion to this position, which created a deficit in the captain's ranks, which we had to backfill for a period of time, from January 22nd to April 5th. And that cost us approximately $25,000, $25,500. With Captain Nash's retirement, that created now two vacant positions backwards, with the trickle-down effect. And that cost us $61,600. We had to cover Captain Nash's position for one day, that roughly cost us $1,400. And then, with some tactical and strategic group reassignments to rebalance the department to offer each group and new captain the support that they need and their success. So, that restructuring cost us approximately $14,800, or $14,900. The contract settlement between Local 857 and the town cost us $54,000, and then some unanticipated costs with the microwave system, with our radio specialist, that was a planned fore, cost us about $2,600 to the date of this memo, which was last week. So, all told, exact figures from what I had was $159,881.15.
Can you repeat one more time?
One fifty-nine, eight-eighty-one, fifteen.
So, how do we prevent people from retiring?
So, yeah, that is a significant amount of money, and unforeseen and unplanned.
So, just, yes, back to me with the numbers. So, just to note, in the 100, and basically, let's call it 160, because it's 159, 881. So, in the 160, you need to back out 54,000, which was for the contract settlement. So, you know, now we're a little lower, but we're still over budget. You know, if I was to send you last week's overtime spreadsheet from the fire department, you would see that there was 8.67 percent budget remaining. But that is prior to the transfer in of the contract settlement, because the program that they use doesn't allow for modifications, we can't update it. So, really, if we add in the 54,000 that they're due, that would then leave about 13.34 percent of their overtime budget remaining. There's approximately 10 and a half weeks remaining in the fiscal year, so that trends about them being over budget by 16 percent, if we're talking percentage-wise. But, you know, $100,000 approximately, give or take. You know, take the 160, less the 54, you know, yeah. So, we have some, you know, options. One is there, we've done some trend analysis on his expenditure budget, there will be some expenses that will be turned back in his expenditure budget. We also have money for these type of instances in the salary pool, which we always budget for annually. We could also go to the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer as these overages were unforeseen or unplanned. And we could also go to town meeting for a budget amendment. We could do a 3 percent transfer without going to town meeting. So, we have some solutions of how we can take care of this overage.
What about the ambulance money?
That would require an appropriation from town meeting. We would have to do that as a budget amendment.
Right. And we have a reserve there, don't we?
We have funds available there, we just need to be careful with that, for the reason that there will be an ambulance that will need to be purchased in the coming years. And we do transfer ambulance receipt reserves every year as one of the other financing sources that we saw this evening. So, you know, that would, we just need to be very cautious with that.
I think it's an option we should have on the table. I don't like any of them, but, you know.
You know, when I'm saying doing a budget amendment or a 3 percent transfer, it would come from another department's surplus budget that's remaining. So, we wouldn't be asked, we wouldn't be appropriating free cash for this, you know. And like I said, it may not come down to that, he could have some of his expenditure budget remaining, but I do anticipate that there will be some sort of transfer needed.
Through town meeting action? No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, no. I mean, we have other avenues, I mean...
Something other than a payroll budget, though, would be...
So, from his expenditure budget, nothing needs to get done. So, if he has $80,000 remain, I'm just, this is not, these are fictitious numbers, but if there was $80,000 remaining in his expenditure budget, nothing, no action would need to be taken. If you know how we vote the motion at town meeting, it's not divided by personnel services and expenses.
Right.
The budgets are controlled internally by personnel services and expenses. We don't let you overspend an expenditure line and then say, okay, well, I'm not going to fill this vacancy, and it will flow to my expenses.
So, we have fiscal autonomy.
And vice versa. I don't let someone say, I'm going to hire this person at $15,000 more because I have $15,000 in my professional services, so...
So, we have fiscal autonomy.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Misery.
He's the fight for that.
Just the impact of 3 percent transfer is all roll into a hit on the mental free cash on that issue. Why not?
A 3 percent transfer comes from another department.
Yes, but if that other department didn't spend the money, it would roll into free cash, correct?
True, but, you know, we'd have to find a funding source somehow to cover this, so...
Oh, no, no, I understand that.
Right.
No, but that, but it's a good point.
I was just making the point, that you said you wouldn't go to free cash.
Well, it would turn into free cash, yes, but I would not use free cash to be my funding source.
I like the idea of using the ambulance funds.
I don't know that I agree with that, just because we have to be very careful with the way that health insurance is going, the way that Medicare is going, and if we don't plan on purchasing another ambulance from the ambulance receipt reserves, and that may be an option, but the trends of collections, I would be a little leery about that.
What does the finance committee has, what, $25,000?
I'm sorry?
The finance committee has how much?
The finance committee has, you know, approximately $80,000 remaining, probably. Those rough numbers. But, the salary pool is set aside for this reason annually, and budgeted for annually.
So, again, no action required at this point. Just, again, trying to get the board informed of what works going on in the background, where things stand now that we've moved the funds associated with the recently settled collective bargaining agreement. We'll continue to keep you apprised.
Sure. No, thank you, though.
I thank the chiefs for staying this evening.
I'm sorry, we stole that, Tanya.
No, I'm just a quick question, though. So, based on the rundown that you gave us, the itemization of what led to this, this is an anomaly, it's a one-time issue that there's an overage, right? I guess to the finance director, I would be asking that. We're not going to see this again in next year, and...
No, I don't anticipate that, the fire, unless...
Right, I mean, unforeseen personnel.
We have some other, you know, personnel changes that really shake things up. The fire chief and I have, back in the beginning of February, when we were revising FY18 overtime budget to align with actual uses and actual hours used, we went through FY19 and made sure that we included everything possible and thought of everything possible. You know, so, unless someone, you know, decides to retire unexpectedly, you know, that's out of our control. Or someone leaves and we're filling vacancies before we can hire someone, those type of things are out of our control. But the things that we know right now, and the things that we have anticipated for next fiscal year, the chief has included in his FY19 overtime budget.
Thank you.
But, you just, you know, I mean, even on the town, you know, in town hall, there's unexpected retirements that we don't know about, and we don't necessarily need to fill them with overtime, but sometimes we, you know, have to hire faster, whatever it may be. So, there are some of those unexpected situations.
Okay. Thank you for staying so late.
Thanks very much, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, while we're on the town administrator's report, if I may, just a friendly note to let folks know that curbside collection of yard waste is taking place in the second week of May. Now, we had the first one on April 14th. So, that's a resource that's available. We're also accepting brush at the yard waste drop-off location through this Saturday at 4:00 P.M., so if you have brush, certainly you're able to bring it down until that point in time. But right now, we don't foresee a need to further extend it beyond that date, but we'll certainly monitor the condition of the town. We received notification from the attorney general's office that Article 25 of last year's town meeting relative to the drone bylaw, what was approved, I think I forwarded that along to the board, but just more for the public to know, we put an ad in the paper, I think recently, the town clerk did, so we satisfied the advertising requirements and the bylaw, as far as we understand it, is now in effect.
Is we calling that the Mani Pelli bylaw?
The Mani Pelli bylaw, yeah.
Let's talk about this in the snow removal.
And just a friendly reminder for folks who may be interested in participating, the community planning commission is going to be working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for an update to our master plan. We have an advertisement out on the website, and really are interested to get a working group together, advisory working group that would assist and guide in the work. Members would be, would attend two to three meetings with the planning commission and MAPC staff, in addition to two larger community forms. I encourage anyone who's interested to contact the planning office. And that concludes my comments relative to the town administrator's report. Mr. Chairman, there's one item that we passed over earlier, health insurance, that is deadline-sensitive, it's purely a vote at this point. I can give a brief update, and I think Mr. Schultz has the motion.
Please, quick update.
So, the quick update is that we had received an initial renewal percentage of almost 14 percent from Blue Cross Blue Shield in the early part of January, and through, and that was basically taking our existing plan and renewing it into next year. But because of the negotiation strategy of our broker, IBG, Tony Mafia, as well as some ability to utilize the performance of our participating funding arrangement, which is the partially self-funded model we instituted during last year's discussions with our IAC, we effectively were able to get our renewal percentage down to 6.2 percent, which is helpful from a standpoint of controlling the cost, but also relieving some of the pressure on our budget for next year. Certainly a welcome change from where we found ourselves a year ago, when we were looking at 10-plus percentage point increases for renewal. I think the most important thing to note is in that number, there's really no change to the benefit that's being afforded to our employees, and we've been able to generate that savings because of our efforts with the participating funding arrangement and the strategy employed. So, we have a motion for the board to approve this evening. Mr. Schultz, I don't know, do you need any clarification on that, or...
No, I have it right here. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the fiscal year 2019 active employee health insurance plan option 1A, as outlined in the attached document, and that was a document that was referred to earlier this evening.
Yes, correct.
With the 6.2 end result.
Second. Motion is second by Mr. O'Leary. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. We're going to skip over the June town meeting warrant, if that's okay with you?
I'll just call the board member's attention. We had a missed article that came to us from the Northeast Vocational School. They submitted it to us by, in writing, in October, or early, sorry, late September, after the deadline for the October town meeting last year. It is on the draft warrant now. We will be sending this draft warrant to town councils tomorrow to review, but there is an additional article. It was submitted to us in a timely fashion for June town meeting. It was simply an oversight in my office to actually add it. I believe I have it somewhere wrong with the stable, I'd strike that. It's right before the first article submitted by the Hillview Commission, so it's pretty far near the end. I want to say it's like right near the end. It can be moved until, you know, up until when the board approves. But, it's a new article that wasn't on there. It was submitted in a timely fashion, we dismissed it, and we put the warrant together.
Do you think we need to move it?
You two can work it out?
We can work it out.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So, we're going to put that back on the agenda for our next meeting, because it's 11:30, and that's going to get us to Arthur Kenny Field Restrooms and Concession Project updates.
Clearly a progress payment, and the progress has been extensive with the building now being delivered, the paving having been completed, I believe, Friday, Saturday. So, the building's there, there was a punch list walk-through today, I have not seen the final report on that, but we're very close to the building being complete.
Yeah, it looks outstanding. Looks like it's been there forever.
Yeah.
Nicely done. So, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment... Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment requisition number seven, the amount of $87,514 to Construction Dynamics, Inc.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Next is a routine license renewal. It happens to be that the licenses expire annually on April 30th. That's why we're asking them to take it up this, this evening for sports, spirits, and steaks pooled.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the pool table license for sports, spirits, and steaks at 178 Main Street to expire on May 1, 2019.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chair, we did skip over the, the regular minutes for April 2nd.
No, we, Mrs. Minipelli had asked, right?
Yeah, we passed.
She asked.
I thought you wanted to review these later. No? Okay. Good. Pass.
Not later tonight.
Not later tonight.
Not later tonight.
We can't do it later tonight.
Let's see, we are at old and new business. And why don't we start with you, Mrs. Minipelli? Mr. Schultz.
I think we've discussed everything issued in town tonight.
You're good. Mr. O'Leary?
Just, I think, snow and ice. We should be done with that. Hopefully, we're within budget. Secondly, brush?
We're not. We're not. We are over budget by, I looked at the finance director, is it about $40,000? Do I remember that correctly? When I say over budget, we're over the budget and the reserve for the next fiscal year.
I'll tell you in one second.
Oh, that's okay. I'm not surprised.
The last time I looked, it was approximately 40, but I just saw a requisition that was entered today for about five, so, you know, call it 50. We set aside 200,000 from free cash.
Well, I think spring is here anyway. My wife took me to walk on the beach and I get sunburned, so things are good.
The Irish tan.
Things are good. This is the Irish tan, yeah. Secondly, just in relation to the brush, I happen to participate in that process, made lots of trips myself and got a lot of positive comments of people appreciating the opportunity to bring it down there. And maybe you want to extend it a couple more weeks because it really is, I think it's something that we should be offering anyway, but it's-
That's a great idea.
It's, it was good.
Yeah. It's perfect. It's one of the number one things that I've heard honestly over the past four years in terms of a service. And I'm not just saying that because I frequent it as well.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think with the right controls, because of the fact of the possibility for abuse.
The landscape design rolling in.
Right. And I know that they've been checking it too because I talked with Chris yesterday. He said he had to stop a couple of people and question them.
You're going to do the secret handshake with him.
Yeah, yeah. But really, it was a terrific service to the community and personally, terrific service to me. I did do some burning, but the only other thing is the next meeting is May 7th. So, I hope people vote. You know, go out there, vote, you know? Really, participate.
I think you two have a real shot.
But, but, yeah, we have a shot at it. But really, you know, we have people who are running as writing candidates.